All right, welcome everyone. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Good to have you all here. If we can open with the roll call, please.
Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Hartman. Councilmember Al Britton.
Here.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Here.
Great. Councilmember Hartman is not feeling well, so he is calling in from home. So that's why you don't see him up here. All right, if we can just join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite,
All right. The first item on our agenda is something that is near and dear to my heart. We have an annual proclamation for monarch pledge. And what that is, I think it's really in tune with who we are as a town and a community. And it's to help preserve the monarch butterflies, which are key in a lot of ways to a lot of other elements that go on as far as, you know, I don't know all the details. You know, they land on things, they pick up things, they land other places, it all works together, and you cut out that one piece and we're in trouble, okay? Plus, they're awfully beautiful, they're part of who we are. And so, December, bail me out here, please, if you can just do that. But it's awesome. It's right in line with who we are as a town. I was really pleased last year when we did this for the first time, how the community really got behind it. So, December, please.
I think you did great. They land on things and they pick up things, and that provides food and everything else that we need. And they say something about a butterfly flapping its wings over there makes it...
That's right.
It's all, we're all connected, everything is connected, everybody's affected if we lose a species. And this pledge that we're taking comes with actions that we need to commit to. You'll see articles in our newsletters, you'll see, as much as we can do, outreach events, you'll see individual homeowners maybe taking the pledges also. And we have a very good policy in Southwest Ranches that we've already set goals for ourselves that support this. The lighting ordinances, the dark skies, the tree preservation ordinance, we've become a community wildlife habitat. So, all of those actions that we already had planned to take support this. It's just a question about spreading the awareness of it, and that's why we do this proclamation tonight.
Awesome, great. Thank you, December. Appreciate it. So we have the proclamation here, which I will read into the record. It says, "Whereas the monarch butterfly is iconic North American species, whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas both the Western and the Eastern monarch populations have seen significant declines, with less than 1% of the Western monarch population remaining, while the Eastern population has fallen by as much as 90%. And whereas Southwest Ranches recognizes that human health ultimately depends on the well-functioning ecosystems and the biodiverse regions that can better support food production, healthy soil and air quality, and can foster healthy connections between humans and wildlife. And whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play in to help save the monarch butterflies, and Southwest Ranches is striving to become a leader. And whereas on April 2nd, 2021, Mayor Steve Bright Cruz signed the National Wildlife Federation Mayor's Monarch Pledge and has committed to taking meaningful action to protect the monarch butterfly. And whereas every resident in Southwest Ranches can make a difference for the monarchs by planting and encouraging the growth of native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And whereas Southwest Ranches has committed to participating in the habitat conservation efforts, providing habitat for monarchs as they make their annual journeys, raising awareness about the need for monarch butterflies habitat, educating the public, and building awareness by engaging the community, maintaining our community wildlife habitat certification. And then therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Town Council, the Town of Southwest Ranches, that annually, on the 4th Thursday in January, shall be recognized as Mayor's Monarch Pledge Day in the Town of Southwest Ranches. Further, the Council urges all citizens to participate in community activities that support and celebrate monarch conservation." Thank you. So, thank you, December, for all your work on this. I know it's, there's more, there's a lot involved in this, but it's important. And I just want to also thank all the residents that have gotten behind this in the last year. We've had a bunch of residents get the milkweed and plant it, and we had some individuals come out into our area. I'm going off. December, why don't you talk about that, when they came out here and they really saw all the butterflies that they found in our parks and things like that?
Yeah, that was really exciting. There's, so there are actual groups of people who go out and count butterflies on a quarterly basis, and they have a very particular grid that they follow, and the counting is incredible. And they're looking for what they see, whatever it is, the common species, and they're, you know, they're very good at identifying these butterflies. And I had the privilege of going out with them. But how that happened is because the, somebody that I knew from the Community Wildlife Habitat Program contacted me and said that they had been counting at our country estates Fishing Hole Park. And, you know, they went into the parking lot, and then they went out and they were looking around, and they didn't see anything much. But they walked a little bit further into the woods and found the mother lode. And they even found a species there that they hadn't seen all day anywhere that they'd been. So they were really excited. And she sent me a lovely email, and she wanted to congratulate us on not maintaining that park, basically. And this is, this is an important point, I'm sorry I didn't make before, but one of the most intuitive things about helping butterflies is to allow things to bloom, even things that look like weeds. And I've seen some of those people, they've made habitats at their homes with weeds that look beautiful. And, you know, we can adjust our thinking because we're so accustomed to mowing the grass and tidying everything up and squaring up the bushes. But when you allow things the chance to flower, everything that feeds on those things has a chance to feed.
Right.
And if we just adjust our thinking in the slightest way, we can make a difference. So, one of the articles that we did not too long ago was about a resident who originally was brought into code for non-maintenance, and we talked to him about ways that he could publicize the fact that he's trying to promote habitat for wildlife, and that helps other people know. That's how the awareness thing happens.
Right.
And so, I'm really happy about some of the areas that we get to leave wild, and to help people find ways to do that in their own places is great, so.
Awesome. Great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Item number four, public comment.
We have one, two, three, four, five speakers tonight. The first one is Noel Hollingsworth. You're followed by Joseph Altshul.
And Noel has a letter there, and he's going to read that into the record. It may take a little longer than the normal time, which is fine.
Good evening, Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. This is a letter that originally was addressed to the Drainage and Infrastructure Board, which I have restructured slightly to go to the Council now, because in December they didn't have a meeting, in January they didn't have a meeting, so I wanted to get it forward. Do not break what is not broken. 199th, 201, 202 avenues did not flood as many of our other town roads did during the 100-year flood event several years ago. Our drainage system of water flowing off the roads to swales and then down to the property lines, and then to the rear of the property, worked in almost all instances. Yes, in some instances, some of my neighbors did fill in the swale, forcing the water to flow down the road to the adjacent plots. But the system still worked and worked well, and water did not accumulate on the roads. It is agreed that the adjustments that were needed on those plots, which did alter the swale, by filling them in. But to arbitrarily change the drainage design of a neighborhood without consideration of whether that, the existing system works or not, is a wasteful expenditure of town funds. These funds could be used to correct a real problem drainage area. What the town has now created is a system where water collects in a ditch, which has been dug to move the water to the property line, then supposedly to the rear of the property. This new design is incomplete because the existing driveways and property lines are not low enough to allow the water to pass over them. At the last Town Council meeting, it was stated by our town engineer that when the property owners redo their driveways, they will be required to place a pipe under their new driveway. This will then facilitate the water movement to the property lines and then to the rear of the property. The fallacy of this is that the front part of the property lines have been sloped by the developer to facilitate the old drainage system, thereby making it impossible for the water to move to the rear of the property under the new system. An arbitrary rule of one size fits all is wasteful and wrong. Each street and neighborhood is different. This system that is now being implemented townwide is not in the best interest of the residents and has broken a system that has worked over 40 years in my neighborhood. What we have now in my neighborhood is a system that A, maintains a foot of water in the front of every house that is incapable of moving to the rear of the property, and therefore can be eliminated only by percolation or evaporation. B, the closeness of the ditch to the roadway is a safety hazard, town liability for walkers, horses, bikes, and cars when they go off the roadway, onto the slope, and then into the ditch. C, the parking of vehicles on the swale is now impossible. Vehicles must now park on the street instead of the front yards of the people they are visiting during family events. D, makes it very difficult or impossible for homeowners to mow and maintain the swale because of the ditch. The standard that is being used to create this townwide drainage pattern is not dictated by the state, county, or drainage districts, but by our town. Therefore, this elected body can recommend changes to the standard, and hopefully, all of you as the Town Council will see the wisdom of this request. The various different residential developments that were cobbled together to form our town have different drainage needs based on the developer's desire for profit, are doing the right thing by the development. What I'm asking is that this Town Council recommend the following changes to the system that is now in place regarding the arbitrary swale drainage plan that is now in existence. One, when a drainage plan works within a development, only fix those sections that need to be corrected. Examples: overfill, excessive plantings, or access to canals. Two, before the request for bid goes out, a workshop is held with the affected residents so as to what is to be done and modify where possible, all concerns without being arbitrary. I understand that one size fits all is easier for the town staff, but this is not who we are as a town, and doing what is right by consulting with our residents is in many ways and times cost-effective. Three, that the roadway drains that have a slope will not be a liability to the town and be surrounded by at least two feet of asphalt or other impervious material on grassy sides and connected to the road with the same material, similar to the drains that are on 195, 196, and 202 avenues. Fix the damage that has been accomplished by this existing project in my neighborhood by A, fill in the ditch to a level of four inches from the road edge. This will restore the drainage that has made walking, horseback riding, bike riding, and parking safer and accessible. The new drains that have been installed on 202 be raised to a standard that will not be a liability to the town because of the accident hazard, and surround them with asphalt and other impervious material. C, go back to all the other paving projects that have been done by the town under Tisdor and make sure that the liability to cars, horses, bikes, and people walking is corrected. D, replace grass with grass. Homeowners put in real sod and not this dead highway grass. In conclusion, it is my hope that this Town Council will refer this matter to the Drainage and Infrastructure Board with the highest priority in order to correct this arbitrary and incorrect management of the swale drainage patterns within our town. Again, do not break what is not broken. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel.
Joseph Altshul, followed by Ruben Allen.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Joseph Altshul. I live on Southwest 164th Terrace, and I'm here to talk about the state of the roads, 162, 163, and 164. And of course, what I'm talking about relates exactly to what Noel Hollingsworth was talking about. It's the result of the latest drainage project. I know that there was supposed to be a workshop before that project was done. I know during the pandemic, I found out about 20 minutes before, and I came to Town Hall, and we had a workshop out in the parking lot, and there was acknowledgement that notice hadn't properly been given, and there would be a new notice and a new workshop for residents to come. I never received notice of any subsequent workshop. I don't know anybody else who's received notice of any subsequent workshop. But if this town has a procedure that says we're going to listen to our residents and let them know and have a workshop, then the town should follow it. The town should do that and not leave us in the state that we're in now. I would invite any of you to drive down 162, 163, and 164. Those roads have been torn up with approximately five cuts, each one about 24 inches wide, none of them leveled. Now, I understand from time to time, they come and they throw a little more dirt on it to try and level it off. It's been at least five months that it's been in that condition. That's probably two to three weeks' worth of work, but because of whatever contracting arrangements were made, whether it was to go with the low bidder, I don't know what, how you guys came to that result, but you have this small group of three or four guys trying to do the construction on three streets, and they're leaving it in an abominable condition. One of my neighbors just had a for-sale sign put up on his house, and I'm looking at his house, and I'm thinking, if I were him, I would be apoplectic right now. You know, he's probably looking at a $900,000 house that looks like it's in a war zone and has looked that way for five months, and there's no indication that at any time in the foreseeable future, that's going to be corrected. I know that I have called and I've spoken with staff on multiple occasions. I know that staff is aware of it, but it doesn't change that here is a project that was done without residents' input. Many would argue that it shouldn't have been done, and it was unnecessary, and yet, it's not getting finished. And so, I don't know what the town can do to finish it, but as Noel said, you know, don't break it if it's not, if it, don't break it if it's not already broken. These guys broke it. These guys went in there, and they broke 162, 163, and 164. If you don't live on those streets, then fine, it probably doesn't bother you. But if you live on those streets, there's no way that you think that's acceptable if you have to drive over that. One of my neighbors who's here tonight, she was telling me tonight that she's had to replace her tires on her car on two different occasions because of driving through the disparity and because of driving through that mess. You guys need to get this fixed, and it's gone on far too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you. Ruben Allen, followed by George Kalis.
Good evening. My second time I get in front of a council meeting like this, so I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to me in here. Hey, I thank you all for the service that you provide to the town, the service that you provide to the community. I've been in the community for 14 years, and I travel a lot, and I can guarantee you that, close to heaven, this is heaven down here. So I enjoy being out here, I enjoy being a resident, from the fire department to the police department, all those guys have always helped me throughout my years out here. So again, thank you very much for listening to me. So in regards to what the individual spoke before, and I'm a contractor myself, so I've been looking forward to that actually drainage for many years, since it gets flooded right where I am. And I've gone several times to see the guys from South Broward Drainage District. They're good men out there. Back where you guys used to be, have your town before.
Yeah, Kevin.
Kevin, Kevin, I went to see him, and he explained everything to me of what you guys were doing, and I was super excited, so getting rid of some of that water. But I think that the town has run into an issue with the procurement process in regards to who they have out there. So the other day, while they're working, and I agree with the statements made by the previous individual in here about the type of, how they're doing the process of the work, I was concerned about my power line. My power line is a ground-fed power line, and the Comcast cable, and with internet and all that, so I digged it out, I marked it, don't cut it. I told the crew, hey, be careful with the power line, be careful with the power line. So they finally went out there, and they hit the cable with their excavator right next to the pole. They dug six inches from the pole, where they can easily see the cable coming down. The transformer blew up, and not only that, it lost the neutral. So on the technical side of it, it went from 120 to 240 inside my house, and I got 20,000 words of damages inside the house. It burned all my appliances, sauce fans, all my radios, TVs, everything is burned. And this happened on December 28. I went, I was pissed. I'm very relaxed now, and it's probably why I'm coming in here to talk, but I was really pissed during the Christmas time, because I had no appliances. It burned everything, the smell of that all inside the house, it was terrible. I had to get an electrician in there, and since then, I've been reaching out to the town to no avail. I sent several emails. May I have a few more minutes?
Yes, you can.
So, five times, and the response I got from the individual, when I went and I approached him, he was like, well, you know, can you give me your, you know, we understand, is, you know, can you give me your company name and your insurance certificate so I can make a claim? He says, well, I'm not going to give you that, talk to the town. That was the response I got from the individual in charge of that crew there. So since then, I've been trying to get this matter resolved. It's been months now. My wife didn't want to come, but you can imagine having your wife and all your appliances without that. So I'm here, but I'm here today to please, if someone can listen to my request. I send emails to everybody. I've been talking to one of your attorneys, I don't know if he's here today, to one of the attorneys. I finally got the claim information, I put it in. I don't even know if the claim, if the insurance that they have is real. And if you look a little bit into the details of the individual, you can do some searches online, you might find some interesting things in there too, that might help the town. And if I might be of service. What he was referring to is because, when you look at the drawings, I do have the drawings in my house. I got it, I think we met with Rod in the field, and he came and he explained the job to us. And they're not following anything of the standard procedures out there in construction, based on my humble opinion. And they haven't compacted, they don't have a compactor on site. So when, by the time that they put the asphalt in, again, those are going, we're going to have, again, the roadway issues. And the way that they're supposed to put the pipe on the ground, they're supposed to come back, compact, and put a bed on underneath it, put the pipe, and shoot a laser through it. They're not doing any of that. They're not doing any of that. They're supposed to put a ring around the drainage now, where they have the cash basins, where they have the inlet of the drains, and they don't seem to be doing none of that yet. They might, they still have time to do it. And then, and then I wanted to ask the town, because I haven't found it in the documents, is what is going to happen with all the driveways that we have? Because they went and they ripped the driveways. Does anyone know that we're getting the driveways replaced, and all the mailboxes? Because they just destroy the mailboxes too. So in order for, you know, if I have to build a driveway, I can put a plan together? Or if I have to put the mailbox, they, you know, put it back?
Right.
It's not in the documents. I, based on my interpretation of the documents, I'm not in here in the townhouse every day, but based on the interpretation of the documents, there's no notes in there about driver repairs or the mailbox. So, thank you again, thank you for your service, and hopefully someone can listen to my emails in there, and we can get this matter resolved.
Right. Thank you for coming in tonight. We're, we'll take these notes after, after public comment. Please stay, because we'll have some comments back to you on the questions you're asking.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
George Kalis, followed by James Kruger.
George Kalis, 6721 Hancock Road. I think you all know me, and complaints again. I want to bring up the fact that Dave and Chris Brownlow caught the dumping that wasn't that long ago, went to the magistrate, and the magistrate let them off again. Now, personally, I think that all this illegal dumping, he should be made to remove everything that was dumped illegally. Now, the reason I say that is because, here we go again, he's not dumping, however, he's got a new enterprise going, and that is, he's leasing or renting out little parcels of land in his, in his three and a half acres, and he wants people to come in and grow their vegetables there. Now, I don't know if this is legal or illegal, but it's going to bring a lot of strangers in the neighborhood, and if it's illegal, let's stop them. If you guys want to look at the pictures and see what he has to say, Google it, Southwest Ranches, Ochi Farms. That's simple, as simple as a guess. Steve, I'm going to give you a copy of what I have.
Yeah, thank you.
If you'd like.
Some of you are lucky, though, it's legal or not. So you're legal, let's stop them, if it's legal, well, that's not a huge problem. But if you just Google it, look it up, Southwest Ranches, Ochi Farms, and you'll see what he's doing.
All right. Good. Thank you, George.
James Kruger, followed by William Grave.
Good evening, everyone. James Kruger, 20211 Southwest 48th Street. I've lived there approximately 11 and a half years now, and my question statement has to do with similar comments made earlier and spoken very well, and with a lot more detail of what I was prepared to bring today. But I was curious about the road resurfacing and drainage project. And of course, as you probably are well aware, there's a number of people that are upset about this. My wife was telling me, for example, on the, on the town's Facebook page, there's numerous comments on there, negative comments, I don't think any positive ones, although I wouldn't know, I don't really go on Facebook ever. But my question really has to do with, what are we planning to do to fix this? Is it just, it is what it is, and we just got to live with it? I'm one of the lucky ones. The biggest problem I have is this highway grass that was put down. But my neighbors, for example, just yesterday, decided to have a contractor come out, and he tore all of that up and put new sod down. And now, the neighbor next to him is doing the same. And I'm thinking, well, I don't see that this should be a homeowner's burden to fix what wasn't done correctly in the first place. So I'm just, I'm just curious, is there, is there going to be a forum for this? Is there any kind of a decision-making process? Or is it just, it is what it is, and we got to live with it?
Okay. Like I said, we're going to, we'll address that issue and the other issues that have been brought up tonight, right after public, right after this public comment session is over, we'll, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Okay?
And I just wanted to thank the others that, like I said, spoke in much greater detail and obviously have much bigger problems than what I do. Mine, I consider fairly minor, but again, I don't think it should be the homeowner's burden to fix what was done in obvious substandard fashion, so.
Got you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
William Grave, followed by John Westman.
Good evening.
50 years ago, in 1972, I bought five acres on Mustang Trail and built my home. Fifty years ago, in 1972, I bought five acres on Mustang Trail and built my home. And since my wife is very, very ill now, I decided it's time for me to sell and, more or less take care of her, because we've had big expenses. So I put my house up for sale. Immediately, we got a good buyer, and this buyer literally put up half deposit, which is normally 10%, and he was a serious buyer. And then we get into this federal and state wetland thing. And every person in the ranches is subject to what I'm about to say, because with wetlands, it affects everybody. And so from the wetlands, he had a situation where roughly 60% of my land was so-called wetlands. And then he was going to see about subdividing it, and with the new subdivision law, it became an expense to him plus a very time-consuming thing. So between the wetlands and the new law to subdivide five acres, I mean, he dropped the whole contract. Would not only cost me the sale, but it cost me thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in lost rent because I had my guest house rented out. So I had to get rid of my tenant because I thought I got a deal for sure because the guy put up half the deposit. So as far as this subdividing, I mean, when I built the house, all I did was via meets and bounds, I just divided it and had the mortgage on two and a half acres. But now it's a nightmare, and from a penny wise and pound foolish situation, the council should really consider easing up on all of these big demands to subdivide because it's costing the town tens of thousands of dollars in lost taxes because when you subdivide, they build two giant mansions and maybe even a castle on the five acres, and we're all familiar with the castle. But anyway, you know, it's a situation that I really wish the council would consider, and we have to do something because if you look on the internet, it says right on the internet that this new federal and state law is against the Fifth Amendment. So you read the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution, and at the end you'll see what I'm talking about. So thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
My French, these damn math.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here for the exact same reason as Bill Griffey. I lived on 13901 Loray Road for 50 years. I've been selling real estate in Southwest Ranches for over 30 years. And the requirements for you to subdivide a piece of property have changed vastly over the years. Used to unincorporated Fort Lauderdale, we dealt with them, it was a very easy and simple process. Then when we became a city in 2000, they started requiring a wetlands determination on a property. Still pretty easy to deal with, not a problem. But now that there is new state regulation or federal regulation requiring this inspection, that from my understanding, the cities and the state have no communication with each other. They can say one thing, the city could say that there's a small amount of wetlands that needs to be delineated, the state can come in there and say that there's a large amount that needs to, you know, be taken care of. This vastly affects everybody's property values if you're stopping people from being able to subdivide their property or be able to build on a piece of vacant land. It's something that everybody should be aware of, and, you know, I'm not sure exactly what can be done about it, but it's, it's a very important thing. I mean, if you're restricting people that spent their hard-earned money buying a piece of property and then like Mr. Griffey, years later, wants to be able to sell that property in today's market but can't
Right.
because of these types of, you know, we all live in wetlands. Everything west of University Drive is wetlands.
Right.
I mean, to determine that his property is any different from any other property is unfair. It's completely unfair.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, that's...
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment?
(inaudible).
Okay. All right. First, let me say I appreciate everybody coming out. I have seen the things on, you know, the comments on Facebook and such. I've seen a number of emails come in, which I responded to as best I could, but I know that there are issues going on out there that we have real concerns about, and they're real concerns. So I want to, I'm going to ask Rod to come up and make a few comments, but before he does, I did want to just make a couple comments, and I'll probably make some at the end as well. But I do want to distinguish between the drainage project that's going on in, you know, 162 through 6 in that area there versus the road, Tisdor Project, that's going on out west. Two different, two different things. The drainage project in Green Meadows has gone on way too long. I'm going to let Rod delve into that, the reasons for that, and talk a little bit about the schedule and when we believe this is going to get wrapped up. The project out west with Tisdor and the roads, I'll say that when we, when we do the roads, we have to provide drainage. If we don't provide drainage, we're throwing our money away because the road will not last. With that said, we need to look closer at, as was brought up, maybe, you know, maybe there's, there's more detail and more options in providing that drainage than just the standard way we've been doing it. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not saying that there is, I'm not saying that there isn't, but I am saying that we need to look at it and we need to see what, you know, what other options are. So with that kind of overview, high level, I know, Rod, if you can come up maybe and talk a little bit about those two projects and issues and kind of your perspective on it, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So what, a lot of what the residents are saying is definitely true. We've had a lot of issues with one particular contractor, and as I stand here now, I mean, I have to say that although their execution sometimes isn't the most expeditious, right? They take a little bit longer to do certain things. Their representative is always responsive. So when we have an issue, if I call something in, he's definitely responsive and he understands what's going on out there, and he's willing to fix it. They had initial issues with materials at the commencement of the project, so they were, they were delayed a good, I think, four or so weeks because they were having some supply issues with the materials, to the point where we actually had to have a spec change that was approved through us and through South Broward Drainage District because the actual materials, they wouldn't be able to get the actual, exact material for months afterwards. So we looked at it, South Broward looked at it, and we determined that it was an equivalent alternative to use, alternatives, excuse me, to use, and we allowed them to do that. So in an attempt to do that, I think with, with the schedule and trying to make up some time, they basically were working very, very fast. We told them in the beginning through the pre-con that they had a very limited amount of time to do it. It is a grant-related project, so they understood that, so they were pushing through. Additionally, what the industry's facing a lot now too, is even after they got the quote from their vendors for a certain pricing of a material, and that pricing typically is good for 60 days or so, the vendor changed the price on them in the middle of the whole operation. So he was already looking at tens of thousands of dollars being in the hole, so he's asked us to look into some ways to look at our contract through different clauses, for as a matter of fact, and different things, to see if he can try to come out whole. So he's trying to balance his money. It's, it's a real issue. I think what everybody's saying right now, I mean, it is, it's been there longer than any of us have wanted it to be that way. They are now restoring on 162nd, so part of my direction to them was this is, the appearance of this construction site has gone on too long. While you're trying to figure out, because there's a couple of things we're trying to negotiate on, on the two, there's only two more outfalls that are, that are left to do in the project, pipe installations, and after that it's all restoration. So as they're doing that and trying to fix, figure out with South Broward and us, if they can truncate some of these distances, then they went ahead and started restoring some of the site on 162nd. And if you drive down 162nd, I think that they're 100% accurate. Some of the roadway's been damaged, I've documented the pictures, and they will fix them. Okay? The gentleman mentioned the driveways. Whenever they fix a, mess up a driveway, whenever they mess up a mailbox, 100%, they will fix it. Okay? So we're hoping, the last schedule that we had, I think they're looking at two installations, like I'm saying, so probably within the next two weeks, they should be done with that work, and after that it's all restoration work. Another gentleman mentioned something about the densities. When they put asphalt down, we will require densities. So they might not, you know, through the filling process temporarily, they might not have achieved the densities that they needed, but for us to take it, 100%, we will get the densities that will require them, and they'll be right. And any other specific questions about that project or...
I think you covered it. I'm going to actually, anything else that we did not cover that...
Yes. Yeah, well, so, so yeah...
So yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to direct that actually to Keith to respond to that, so we'll get to that.
I would only ask maybe some, you say, past work, I would ask some kind of, give us some dates, tell us when the restoration work is going to be done. What can we expect to have a street that's not going up?
No, absolutely. So the installation of the piping, I think like in the next two weeks should be done, and then after that it's all restoration work. So if you go down 162nd now, you'll see that a lot of the yards that have been disturbed, the pervious areas have all been soted, they've all been restored. Now, the driveways still have to be done, I understand that, the crossings have to be done. So once they finish the pipe installation, you're probably looking at another four weeks of restoration, is what I'm, you just ballparked what I'm out there now from what I'm seeing and their pace of work. So that's, that's what we're anticipating right now.
Okay. So just, is there anything else from your perspective?
No, any other questions? I'm happy to answer.
I'm going to allow you to come up, but please come up to the mic because otherwise the people at home cannot hear what you're saying.
Oh, I live on 162nd. I don't see any restoration going on. I also wanted to ask whether there is a reason why they only work two, three days maximum out of the week? Is that, is that part of the plan?
No, no.
Because...
Yeah. So I drive there every single day, basically. So what they do is there are certain days, whether it's rain, obviously they won't work, and they'll skip around a lot. That's one of the things I've gotten into conversations with this particular contractor, is they'll jump from place to place and they'll leave the area in a state of disarray. It's one of the main issues I have with them.
Right.
So maybe not on 162nd, you know, they might work there two days a week, but they're there all the time. And if, from a restoration standpoint, again, just for me to clarify, if you drive down 162nd, you see a lot of the disturbed areas in the pervious where the grass was, all that's been re-sotted. Okay? Not, not everything 100%, but a vast majority of 162nd has been restored. Now, they're working now on two, the two final structures that I think they got in today, on the north side of 162nd, that should be wrapped up, so you'll see some disturbance there, obviously, but, but the rest of the street, for the most part, has been re-sotted.
Great, good.
Mr. Mayor, quick question.
Go ahead.
Rod, could you explain the re-sodding? It's not going to be with the St. Augustine grass that most had? What sod's going to be put in?
We actually spec'd the Hia, just like we do on all our projects.
Exactly.
But contractor has elected to put St. Augustine, and he basically is eating the cost of that on his own.
Is that just on 166 or will that be on all of them?
That's right now through the course of the entire project, so...
The project being the one in Green Meadows.
Green Meadows, that's correct. Yeah. So he's right now putting St. Augustine back. That's what he's using to restore.
Thank you.
But it's, it's on his dime. It's not, we didn't spec it.
Okay.
Right, right. Good. All right. Thank you, Rod. Tisdor related, anything? Yeah, I think we're, I think we're good. So I, so the schedule that I'm hearing is that we look to have all the work done by mid-Febuary, and that I would say, it sounds like the restoration, I would go, he said four weeks, I would say by the end of March is really what I was, because things, there's always things that come up that are unanticipated, so, so I would say the end of March. Okay. All right, Keith, if you can talk a little bit about, you know, the insurance and kind of how all that works?
The property owner has done everything right to this point. The town took us a couple of days to get it through the file, but we were able to provide the property owner with the insurance certificate of the vendor, and the last I read, the property owner submitted a claim with the insurance carrier.
Okay.
It's not the town's issue in terms of liability, it's 100% that of the contract.
Right. So we're facilitating the process.
We provided him with the information he needs to go after the carrier if they believe they have liability for the loss.
Okay, okay. Yeah, come on up.
Just to make a statement on that one, it's, it's a town project, it's, I'm not supposed to be dealing with a contractor. I'll do it, but it's your, your job, and you are under the insurance policy as an additional insurer. So as I said, you guys do your job, it's a government job, you request from the contractors, and I'm a contractor myself, to add the insurance policy, name you guys as an additional insurer. So that's why I make the claim to that, but ultimately, liability goes to the owner, which this house is the town. I just want to make that clarification. I'm not supposed to go after the contractor, it's not my contractor, it's the town contractor. And I say that respectfully, just wanted to have a clarification.
Just for the record, the town does not have liability if a contractor damaged your power, but
Say that again?
The town does not have legal liability if a contractor damaged your power at your house. It doesn't work that way.
It doesn't work that way?
No.
Who's the, who's the owner of the...
The liability is that of the contractor. The town is named as an additional insured to protect the town from loss if it did something to the town. But the contractor is 100% liable if it caused you damages. If you're able to prove those damages, it's that of the contractor.
Okay, but then, then, you know, again, one more time, when I go with Miami County and a contractor or any Broward County, that's why they all protect themselves from liability. And I'm not an attorney, I can only speak about my experience in here and just common sense. I'm not supposed to be dealing with a contractor, he's not my contractor, he did some damage under your direction. You're the owner. Is if I send someone on my team to do that, to do some kind of work, it's not the responsibility to the guy who I sent to be responsible for that, it's the owner. And being the town, the owner, is who I'm looking at. But again, I might be wrong, I'm not saying that I am correct on that, but that's my point of view on that. Thank you again.
Thank you.
But then, but then, I'm here and I'll come back, you guys meet again in two weeks?
Right.
Okay, so I'll be back in here because again, it has been a month now, and I don't know about you guys, but none of you guys would like to be without a refrigerator and all of it, this watch, especially these days, it's not, not found.
Right.
And if you were going to Christmas on that, that thing, you would have been a little bit even more upset about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. All right. Then I wanted to touch on the issues that we spoke about with the wetlands. That's a very real issue. It's not, it's not, I don't want to say it's not a town issue, it's a town issue because we have so much wetlands in our town. Our properties were, you know, at one point, part of the Everglades. So, so from that perspective, it's very much a town issue. But from a regulation and a requirement standpoint, the town has no standing to request any changes or have any changes. This is something that is done at a higher level, and we have actually, in the past, we have tried numerous occasions to, to, I don't want to say get around it, but to have other options where we could handle it ourselves and could do it in a way that is more, you know, realistic for the kinds of properties that are in our town. And the county has, has basically not allowed us to do that in a very strong way. So we're continuing to try and work on that for other options, but... try and work on that for other options, but that is something that unfortunately is very much outside of our control. But we have tried on numerous occasions to try and, and kind of lessen, lessen the burden on that. The subdividing of the properties is another issue that we have been debating on, but I don't think we've made any changes to this point. And I think, I think those are, well, I'm not sure. They didn't really go into the detail on what they were, they're talking. So, we're gonna need, as far as, as far as the dividing of the properties, I guess what I'm saying is I need more, we really need more information on the details of that, to know what's going on there, to be able to determine whether we can help out or not. Let's, let's put it that way. I don't want to be guessing up here. I think that covered the issues. What else?
We have several.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Absolutely, absolutely. I apologize. So, so the, the project out there, obviously, is the road project. And there is the drainage associated with it. I did touch on it, but let me go into more detail. And that is that we definitely are gonna be looking at that to see if there are other options, ways that we can improve that. The one-size-fits-all is, is, you know, possibly not the best way to go. And so, we're gonna definitely look at that. The, as far as, you know, the, the primary project there is putting down a road. To protect that road, that's why the swales come into play. That's why the drainage piece comes in there. So, we'll look at the drainage to see if, if there's some other options there that are better. And then there's the, the grass piece. And this actually has been discussed long before this project, when underway, went to the drainage committee, it's gone to the council. And, and the thought was that to save, to save the tax dollars, not knowing what different types of grass people would have, obviously, a lot of people have St. Augustine, but, but not everybody has that. And, and so it was more from the standpoint of trying to protect and guard the tax dollars. We were like, you know what? We will use the Bahia. Bahia, there was two advantages to it. One, it was less expensive. And two, because we have to do these projects during the dry season, Bahia holds up a lot better if it's not maintained, if it's not watered regularly. Whereas St. Augustine, we've all seen it, where somebody puts down St. Augustine, they don't water, and it just, you know, within a matter of four or five days, it, it's totally dry and is dead. So, Bahia is, is a more sturdy, robust grass, and it'll last a lot longer if it's not maintained. And so, so that, those were the two reasons why it was picked. But that's another thing, we're gonna go back and look to see if we can come up with some alternatives that are fair, not only to the projects in the future, but the projects in the past. Maybe giving some sort of a credit or a partial reimbursement for, for, if folks want to replace their grass with something else. So, we're looking at that. I can't say whether that's gonna go through or not, but I'm, I'm hopeful it will, and we'll, we'll do something along those lines. Anything, I really, I'm not trying to avoid anything. I just want to make sure I hit on everything that was...
No, I'm glad that you're looking into it. Any idea about what kind of timeframe that we're doing?
Well, I want to, so the question was, if you can hear it online, the question was, is there any sort of a timeframe on when we're gonna do that? I, I would like the, as with anything like this, I want to bring it to the drainage committee, because that's made up of residents. And they're aware of what's going on. They're watching it, and they, you know, they're in the middle of it. So, so I want to bring it to the drainage committee next, so that they can talk about it and, and kind of weigh the, the alternatives. They'll make a recommendation back to the council, and then we'll make a final, final decision on it. I suspect that we're looking at, I would say, 45 to 60 days.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Once again, I just want to say that I know, I know there's a few projects going on here, as we've been talking about. And it's a lot of disruption. Projects always look good on paper. When the reality comes and things happen, a lot of times, it doesn't go the way we want it to. A lot of times, the way we think that it should go, that looked good on paper, sometimes doesn't look so good in reality. But we're always trying to learn from that. We're always trying to do better. And, and I appreciate the fact that you all took time out tonight, from your schedules, to come out here and to kind of drive home the points of, of some things that we need to work on to do better. So, thank you for coming out. Appreciate it. And, and we are taking all this back, and we'll, we will do better. So, thank you. All right. Board reports. Do we have any board reports tonight?
Good evening, council, mayor. George Morris, Chair of the Drainage Board. Hopefully, I don't get any pitchforks in my back. As far as our report for December and January, we didn't have our board meeting in January. It was a conflict in scheduling with the councilmen. They were out of town, so it was decided to roll that meeting over. With regards, if I can comment on some of the things, I don't know if I should or I shouldn't, but with regards to the types of grass that did come up for discussion in the past, and it was the consensus of the board that the type of grass, you know, fluorotan versus Bahia, the drought tolerance, the necessity for watering, the cost difference, that was the decision that was made. That was the thinking behind it. It's drought tolerant grass. A lot of people don't have irrigation in their swales. So, for the contractor to put the grass down and for it to take would be much better, right? Doesn't look as pretty, although I can attest to the fact that with Bahia, Bahia actually grows coming up, and the fluorotan has leaders. The fluorotan, if you have fluorotan in your yard, it will actually overtake the Bahia 100% with time. It evens out, it grows. But that's not for me to make any final decision. That's pretty much my board report.
Okay, great. Thank you, George. All right. Seeing no, no other board reports. Councilmember comments?
I have other board reports.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, I just got a little sidetracked there. Okay. On behalf of the Astronite Parks, just wanted to make a few comments with regards to the carnival. I wanted to just go over a few things. I don't know if you councilmen or anybody had a chance to come out there. I know I saw several of you. It was quite the event. You know, we received our permit approval from you guys back in December 17th. The carnival was scheduled for January 14th. Our team was able to pull together and get things rolling. We actually pulled it off. We opened up on Thursday night, not knowing who would come or what would come. The weather was cool. We actually had a, a very good showing on that Thursday night. It exceeded our expectations. We actually sold about $6,000 worth of tickets. Almost $7,000, actually. It was $6,919. And then our following night, Friday, you know, we had, you know, we figured, well, if we sold $6,000, $7,000 worth of tickets, maybe we'll do double on Friday. We actually sold $27,791 worth of tickets. And that's, these are tickets at the site. This didn't include any pre-sales. We actually didn't have any pre-sales, and we didn't have enough time to arrange that sort of thing. And Friday night was a very successful night, again. And on Saturday, Saturday was our big night. We had a tremendous showing of people. It was crazy. A lot of people came out, a lot of families. People came out early. The carnival opened up around noon time. It went on to, I believe, 11. It was an amazing crowd. I saw David was out there, and he was enjoying the, the time. The weather was perfect. It was a very busy night. We had lines at our ticket booths. Hindsight, you know, we could have put more ticket booths. We tried to pull in as many people as we could. We had Barbara Lester was actually in one of the ticket booths. She was feverishly selling tickets. I had my wife was there, along with Rick Bell. We were hand-selling tickets at the back of the lines to try and, you know, sell bracelets. They were selling woof for several hours. I mean, we really had record sales, and it was a great night. With regards to how many tickets we sold that night, you know, we sold 30,000 the previous night. You know, maybe we're keeping our fingers crossed for $50,000. It's still, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of tickets. We actually broke all expectations that night. We sold $70,015 in tickets, with two ticket booths, right? And that was an incredible night. We did have one incident that night. EMS and the fire was called out. There was a report of an animal that injured a, a child. It, it was a misunderstanding. It didn't happen. The EMS came out, looked at the child. There was nothing wrong. No bruises, no blood, no bleeding, no nothing. You know, there was reported that it fell off or got kicked. No one really knew. It was sort of an overreaction. But at the end of the day, when the EMS looked at the child, child was fine. Child ran off, went, started going back on rides. The EMS, at that time, in the fire department that was dispatched, left. And during that time, our peak hours of the carnival were actually, starts ramping up around 6:00 PM, and by 8:00, it's the height. The EMS and the fire rescue was called about 7:45. At that time, when they were called, I saw, I was there, I was there pretty much during the whole time of the carnival, from start to finish. EMS came in. I needed to, I felt that I needed to close off the entrance to the carnival to provide, you know, priority to the EMS entering and exiting. At that time, I was working with the Davie Police Department, and I asked them to close the entrance of the carnival. Because where the petting zoo area was, was at the entrance of the carnival. So, long story short, we closed for about 15 minutes, between 7:45 and 8:00. And at that time, the traffic started getting backed up. So, you know, there were some reports, people were complaining, the traffic started backing up. It actually did back up. It was because of the EMS and the fire rescue. But shortly after that, we opened it back up. The traffic continued to flow. During that time, where I had closed it down for 15 minutes approximately, people got a little bit impatient, and they started going down 163rd and parking. We didn't see that coming. There was really no reason for anybody to go down 163rd and start parking. I know there's some complaints, you know, maybe residents who were complaining about the traffic. Yes, that happened. But we were quickly able to put a police car there and stop the traffic from going down there. And we opened back up, and the, the traffic was actually flowing very, very, very well. The way everything was designed with the entrance on Griffin, the cars were entering and exiting there. We had a right turn for exit only, and they were coming in off of Griffin east and westbound. So, it was, it was a really good flow. They came into the carnival. There's a picture up there that's up on the screen now. You can kind of see to your right where they're coming in off of Griffin. They were coming around there. I created a drop-off point there where people were able to drop off people and pick up people and then turn around and go out. The way the parking lot was designed, Russell, if you can just show another aerial, it's kind of interesting. That's just an overall aerial right there. I actually took that picture with my drone. That was on Saturday night. You can see the people around the rides, the people enjoying themselves. We had the midway, two sides of the midway. Everybody was, you know, flowing very well. There was space between the rides. It was really, was set up, that, that property is just a beautiful property, the way it was filled and, and built up, you know, between the donation of the material that we got from Weston and a contractor that donated as well. Here's an actually incredible picture, if everybody, you know, can look over there. I can't even count how many cars were there. The way the parking lot was laid out, we initially set up for, well, half that amount of cars. And as the cars kept coming and coming and beating our expectations on Saturday night, we just kept expanding the parking lot. The grounds that are there, they're covered in grass. There's some low spots. There's high spots as well. I identified the low spots with the LiDAR radar, working with Rod. And we kept the cars out of those spots. We didn't have really any stuck cars whatsoever. But the cars go pretty much from Griffin all the way back to Camp Lingua, I believe it is. And there's probably a thousand cars there. It was incredible. There was really no traffic, you know, backing up, coming in and out, other than that one particular time. There's an overall aerial view, pretty much, let's say, over like, from the Home Depot direction, looking back towards there, you can see the carnival. The cars, we had the parking lot lit. We didn't have any incidences other than a real jackass creating a problem. It was a donkey that had the problem with the child. It was a real jackass. But, everybody came out, they had a great time. We raised a lot of money. And, okay, so that was Saturday. We raised $70,000. And we looked at ourselves and said, Sunday. Sunday was a little bit more challenging. We had tornado watches. Everybody's Amber Alerts went up on their telephones. I was like, oh, my gosh. We opened up at 12. We got all these tornado warnings. I was able to work with Andy, the police and the fire, to just extend the carnival a couple hours. It was supposed to close at 9:00. We moved it to 11:00. We opened up at 4:00. So, our hours were shortened. The weather was a factor. But believe it or not, that was our second busiest night, and we had nearly almost $30,000 that night. It was incredible. It was absolutely incredible. There were some rumors on Facebook or Backdoor that there were some problems or fights or whatever it was. But what that was, I was there the whole time. I witnessed everything. There were no fights. There were no police reports of any incidences like that. It was groups of teenagers that were coming to the carnival. And there were horseplay. They were playing around. They were with their phones, trying to make videos and how they love to post and create things that weren't really in existence. But there were, again, no fights, nobody got hurt, no instances of anybody getting arrested or anything like that. It was very drama-free. Overall, if I added up everything, we had nearly $132,000 worth of ticket sales in those four days.
Amazing.
Absolutely incredible. And on those numbers, we took in nearly, we had also vendors that supported us. We had Gentle Dental made a very nice contribution. We had AirPro. We had Camp Lingua, which is next door as well, and a few other vendors that contributed. And we took in over $40,000. And that was for the carnival that raised. I have a lot more ideas for next year, bringing in vendors and maybe setting up tents and having other ways of raising money. I think we can even make it a bigger and better event next year, knowing what we know now. I know where I may have gone wrong. I know what we can improve, adding different exits, maybe to Dykes Road or, or et cetera. I, I would like to say very special thanks to Lee Bennett and Jeff Habalis of the Davie Police. They were very instrumental in helping us out. We were able to get, you know, all the police and fire support. So, we, you know, we had all our inspections. And again, we had EMS stationed there. We had the police stationed there. They were very helpful. And a special shout out to Rick Bell, Elizabeth, and Barbara Gonzalez, December, I don't know if she's still here. Thank you very much. She worked with us very closely, setting up everything. And Winston as well. And on behalf of my entire board for the Astronite South of Vansus Park Foundation, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to have been able to host this situation, the carnival. And we think it's, it was a great success. And if blessed by y'all, we'd love to do it again next year and see if we can build on it. There's a video playing right there on the TV of everything that went on. That's basically going down the midway. We had the slide in the middle. We had food trucks. It was just absolutely stunning night, great weather. And I know a lot of people were very happy. If anybody has any questions?
Great job, George.
Thank you.
Yeah. You and your team.
Thank you. It was a team effort, and I certainly enjoyed it. I look forward to doing it again.
Yeah. And I think the, I think the other thing with that is it really has shown, opened up, that we can use that property like, for craft fair or for a farmer's market is what I'm really looking forward to, getting out there as a farmer's market with a lot of our residents out there and, you know, being able to do that.
The property is an amazing property. I did have a chance to speak with some local residents. One particular person, her name is Connie. Her last name slips my mind, but she lives right next door, actually abuts the property there. And she came over to the carnival. She's been living there for over 30 years. And she came over in a wheelchair, and she came running down the sidewalk into the carnival. And I saw her run in there, and she came running out. She had two bags of cotton candy tied to her wheelchair. And I stopped her, and I talked to her. I said, hey, how, you know, how's it going? Did you, you know, what do you think? You know? And she said, oh, I live right next door. This is great, you know? She was very happy to see that. A lot of other residents were happy to see that something being done with the property, being put to a, you know, to a use. And I was telling people that, you know, potentially, we're looking at, you know, craft shows, you know, farmer's market or something, you know, I'm very interested in trying to, trying to organize and do. And, you know, the overall consensus was people were very happy. And, and, you know, with regards to, you know, seeing something being done with that property. And I think it's just, it's a wonderful piece of property, an open space as well.
Yeah.
And the other land where we had the parking was just phenomenal. It really, really, really was, just, just worked out well.
Yeah.
Dave, you had a question?
Hey, George. I just had a question about the cars that were parked on the street. I believe it's 162nd.
Yeah, 163rd.
163rd, okay. That's something that probably need to look into.
No, absolutely. Next year- Next year, we're going to have signs that tell people, you know, closed to local traffic only and maybe have a police officer or somebody stationed there. I didn't see it as a problem. I don't, I didn't know what I didn't know. I've never done this before. It's the first time I've ever done this. But now knowing what I know, that'd be one of the issues that I'll certainly address is cutting down the traffic and, you know, stopping, you know, only local tra, you know, keeping only local traffic going down there. But again, the problem was created because of the situation where I actually closed the carnival on the worst day at the worst time and the traffic did back up. So people are like, well, I'll just go here. And I was like, you can't do that. But there's just so much that I can do.
Did a great job.
Thank you.
That was, that was the biggest thing, I think, that we need to learn from and improve on next time.
Yeah.
But overall, we do need to protect that, that neighborhood from the traffic.
No, absolutely. And that would be my priority. And, you know, for every problem, I believe there's a solution. And I've already got solutions in making other entrances and exits and, you know, using Dykes Road and, and et cetera and dealing with the traffic.
George, I want to say thank you also from District 3, the people that do live on 163rd. I went door-to-door knocking, spoke to them before the carnival and assured them that if there was any problems, you know, that the police department, whatever, would take care. They were worried about the Carney people. There's that reputation of them. But I'll tell you what, speaking to every one of those Carney people like I did and talking to the two people that were running it, that was excellent choice of people that he brought in. No problems, yes sir, no sir, yes ma'am, no ma'am type of people. And I don't think the residents had any concern whatsoever of, of anything happening. So, and actually, the people that were complaining the most lived about a half mile from the carnival. And actually, the three that complained the most weren't even there that whole weekend. They were up in Orlando. So you know what? People just like to complain sometime, that's all. But thank you. And, you know, like you said, there's a few small bugs that need to be worked out, but overall, I think it went well. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, coming up next year, you know, we're going to have a lot more time to plan. You know, we're going to have a whole year. We're going to put a committee together. We're going to work on that. So, you know, see as a problem. The company that I worked with was actually recommended to me. New Hallingsworth was actually instrumental. He has a lot of information and background in carnival, so he actually did help me in the background as well. And through the insurance company that produces the insurance for these carnivals, this company was highly recommended. And believe it or not, he's actually based in Southwest Ranches, lives in Southwest Ranches. So he's a, you know, great asset to our community and cares and is concerned about our community. And yeah, Carneys do have a bad reputation. You know, I don't know anything firsthand, but you hear this and that. But the reality is, they're actually a wonderful group of people. They enjoy what they do and they go from different place to different places. And, you know, they do work for whether it's hospitals or churches. And believe it or not, they've all been vetted. They've all had background checks. I didn't know that. He was telling me this, the owner of the carnival. So they're not criminals and they're not people who ran away and joined the carnival like we all think, you know? They're actually very good, hardworking, honest people. They cleaned up the site every single day. They, they really cared about what went on. When the carnival closed, I mean, at 11:00, they had a secret code. They had that big wheel. They turned the, the lights off of that and then every Carney could look up and say, oh, it's time. And they would close right away and, and pretty much the carnival would empty out. And then they would go into trash duty. They would empty all the garbage containers. They would walk around the site, pick up the, the garbage. It, it went really well. Overall, it, it really went well. So we're, you know, I'm very happy and blessed to have the opportunity to have done that and I look forward to doing it again.
One more quick question, Mr. Mayor. Is New Hallingsworth a Carney guy? What did you say? Is he? Is that what I heard?
He has a lot of experience doing Carnival Broward.
Good job, George.
But he knows, he knows. He helped me as well and gave him great advice. Anybody else have any questions?
Good job, George.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great job and the board all did wonderful.
Thank you. You had a good team.
Yeah, it was all a team effort and I appreciate all the help of every board member.
Great.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'd, if you'll allow me, I'd like to segue into Council member comments and capitalize on something that George, that has to do with the carnival and has to do with the five acre. This, this is something, I opened up Gary's idea book and came up with this and we'll see if it floats or treads water or it sinks. I was talking to George when he was setting up out there and I was asking him about his water situation, where he's getting the water from, electrical, all that other stuff. And he expressed to me that they had a 4,000 gallon tanker out there. And did I, did I get their number right?
4,000.
Yeah, 4,000. 4,000 gallon potable water. So anyway, the wheels started turning and I'm thinking, okay, the five acres, and we really should have a name for that other than the Winnie the Pooh 100 Acre Woods, the five, the town five acre. But that's another, that's for another discussion. Maybe we should have a contest on it or something. But we have a park right next door. That's where all the cars were. What if we were to put in, have Andy start doing research on it, a bathroom pavilion area that has power, has a well, has a septic tank, all that, like we have at the Equestrian Park, like we have at the Country Estates Park? The size, I don't know, but I would assume it would be something that would probably be needed like out at the Equestrian Park. And I'm pretty sure that would satisfy a lot of our grant requirements, some, some of our grant requirements for Green Meadow Sanctuary where we haven't really put anything into it per se compared to the other parks. And it would serve a dual purpose, especially if you put it right on the property line of facilitating the five acres for other events that may come and go throughout, i.e. the farmer's market, the carnival, things of that nature. So what I'm looking for, I guess, is I'm looking for a consensus. By the way, Bob, I hope you're still there and I hope you feel better. I meant to say that at the beginning, but, so, but I've been looking for a consensus from the council to give Andy direction to move in that, to move on a, on a project like that. You know, we might be talking 12 months from now for fruition or possibly longer, but to seek the funding, to seek possibly the Parks Foundation participation in it, seek Emily with grants, you know, to move forward with, with something like that that would benefit that area. So, do you need a motion, Andy?
Let's just maybe get a quick discussion if we can kind of interrupt your comments for a second.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, any, any response for that?
Gary, got a quick question. Right now, it's only been used once a year. I know the mayor has the idea and all of us are in agreement. We want a farmer's market. But shouldn't we get that up kind of running first to, to see if it's something that people will do? We may have a farmer's market and for the first month, it's great, but then nobody shows up for the next eight or nine months. And the only thing we have is a carnival there. And then you've got a facility that's going to be vandalized and messed with. I mean, if it's used weekly or monthly, I, I think it's great, but if it sits there for a year, I don't know. Is that a good idea?
Well, no, I think this is going to be one of those, what came first, the chicken or the egg kind of a situation. I do know that there's a, it's eventually, we're going to need that at that park regardless. You know, we have to develop the park.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think it's a wise investment.
Hold on just a second, David, because I think Bob, yeah, can we let Bob jump in?
Yeah, I, I like the idea for the long term. I, I have similar concerns as Jim. So perhaps what we can do is investigate the costs and, you know, a little bit further down the road, make a decision on whether we're going to spend the money or not. Because yeah, it's, it's an opportunity for vandalism since the park is inadequately fenced and, you know, I don't want to throw good money after bad in this scenario. But I'd like to know more about it. I, I think it's a good, a great idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. Yeah, we, you know, we got to start somewhere. And, and, and we start with the planning, we start with, we start, you know, paper is very patient. We're not spending any money on, with paper. So we need to see what it is.
I think, actually support something like this. I heard years ago that there was discussion about possibly selling it and before, or 5-0, before the 5-0 vote came through. And I wanted to do whatever we could to protect town-owned property, to sell it to speculators. But I think it was a very wise decision to not allow that to be sold off that, and to help facilitate and promote that as maybe a future farmer's market. We will eventually need something to provide facilities for the people attending. So I think it's a great idea. It's a great idea.
Let's, let's put it on paper and then, you know, obviously, this is going to have to come back to us for cost numbers and all that. But, you know, it's some, somewhere down the line, the, the snowball's got to start rolling down the hill.
Right. Yeah, I mean, my perspective on it is that these are, these are two different trains that can move at different speeds, but it's, I think it's good to get both trains going. You know, the train one of continuing to get more and more activities out there and train two of what you're describing, getting some facilities out there that will help the whole thing and frankly, save money and whatever, you know, make, make the whole process easier to, to be successful in the future. But I think to everybody's point, you know, at some point, we're going to get to the, the situation where we need to make a choice. You know, is this the right time to actually pull the trigger and, and put these facilities in? We may say yes or we may say, you know, we need to wait a little bit longer.
Yeah, nothing's carved in stone right now. This is an idea that I'm putting forward. I think it'll, I think it'll pick up and pick up legs or wings or however you want to phrase it, you know, down the road. Because this isn't anything happening within the next, you know, couple, a couple of weeks, you know?
So what I think, I think I've heard a consensus to, to move forward with the investigation. Does anybody have a concern about that? Are we good on that?
No, I'm in agreement.
Okay.
Agreed.
Good.
All right. We'll put that on the list. Just FYI, I've asked Andy to petition Broward County to put in new bollards on 148th and Griffin. That's where the Shell Station is. It looks really bad there and people are just cutting through now. And we're back to the situation where we have two right-hand lanes. And so I, I've just asked him to put that work in. So that's just an FYI and it looks in our town. By the way, thanks everybody for coming and thank you for all your comments we had. Hopefully, we're able to answer them somewhat satisfactorily. And obviously, there's some more work we need to do regarding our, our various projects and we will, you know, take it to heart and, and move in that direction. In the newsletter, there's a very good article in there, I urge everybody to read it, on the dark sky ordinance regarding lighting. And it's in the center section of the, the newsletter that came out for February. So I just want to mention that. The Education Advisory Board is putting on the barn dance on the 12th of March. The tickets are to be determined. They haven't put all that together yet, so I don't know where they're, where the tickets are available at. I'll find that out at the next meeting. We have the rescheduled for the run for diversity, the Seek Youth Society 5K is scheduled now for April 9th, Saturday at Rolling Oaks Barn. I believe it's at 7:00 AM. The 5K is going to go from the barn down to the end of 178th and back. One lane of traffic is slated to be closed, but locals will have, be able to enter and exit on Saturday morning. So I just wanted to bring that up. As the plans become closer, we'll be able to give more details on that. Also too, at the barn, we have hazmat on the 12th of March with shredding, prescription drop-off. So just wanted to make that out, get that out there. Slated on the 2nd of April, the Easter Bunny's coming to Rolling Oaks Barn for the annual egg hunt. It's been postponed for the last couple of years. I'll let everybody have fun with the Easter Bunny fly. I think the Easter Bunny's getting a new suit this year.
Nice.
So we're working, we're working on that. The Southwest Ranches, I'm sorry, Sunshine Ranches HOA is having a party at the Equestrian Park on the 10th. Town Hall is closed on President's Day, the, which is the 21st of February. We have the DMV Flowmobile on the 23rd of February here from 10:00 to 2:00. It's by appointment only, so please call. Debbie, thank you. Never mind. You know what I'm talking about. Had a brain freeze. For an appointment for the DMV Flowmobile and the Broward County Property Appraiser is on the 17th from 10:00 to 12:00 here, if you have anything that you need to go over with that. Okay, that's the easy list. Now the hard list. Okay, we've talked about code. We've talked about proactive versus reactive. Andy asked Julio, who's in charge of code, what would be something that would be helpful to him that would be in the proactive level? And he came back with two very active things. One is storage containers and the other one is work without a permit. Those were his two suggestions that would cover, he said that would, that would cover, and Julio, correct me if I'm wrong in any of this, I know you're in the audience there. He, he said that that would cover about 80 to 90% of the code calls that he gets. And if they were able to go proactive on that, we would, you know, it would be very helpful. And obviously, this is not me making a decision. I'm just bringing it to the light of day and was wanting to get your guys' comments on it. And you don't have to comment on it now if you don't want, if you want to think about it. You know, we can, we can move on down the line. You may want to add to that or subtract to that. But that, that was what Julio, who's in charge of code, came up with when, when I started Somebody bear with me here for one second.
While you look at that, let me just, I'm just going to follow up on the one you just mentioned.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'm, I think those two are ones that come up a lot that we should seriously consider. As far as the work being done, I think that we should look into some different types of restrictions or regulations that where the, the permit should be out front where people can see it so that neighbors know that it's being done right without having to contact code every time. I think that's just, that's just the good, the best way to do it rather than, you know, it's the most direct. If you see that permit up there, then you know that they went out there and they, they got the permit, they're doing it the right way and it's moving forward. But if there's a question, I think the proactive is, is appropriate in this case because it's so, so common.
Yeah, and, and I, I just think that, you know, I've, I've got people calling me and I'm real hesitant on some of the individuals to, you know, and, and I tell them that.
Yeah.
And that's why they tell me I get paid the big bucks. So, okay, I, I've got my thoughts collected here. All right. In our efforts, and I say our efforts because it's a team effort, to keep our town rural, I'm requesting that this council put in a zoning in progress for land use and rezoning. So this way, the council can control a timeline and the requirements that may go with it. So this way, the council can control a timeline and the requirements that may go with it. Right now, there's some property that's being considered, and the temperature, I feel, is running pretty high on that, and this may lower it. And I feel that if we use the zoning in progress now, it'll be beneficial for us, because it, we're not reacting, we're being proactive on that. And I spoke to Jeff Cadums and Keith about it. They're ready to go with that. It does not affect any other aspect of zoning, or any building, or anything like that. It only deals with land use and rezoning of property. And I'd like to make a motion, and I'd like to hear some support, to put this through.
I'm not sure exactly I know what it's going to affect and what it's not going to affect.
It will only affect anything that's being rezoned, any property that wants to be rezoned to residential.
So what's your motion?
My motion was to put in a zoning in progress for any properties that would be zoned, that want to be rezoned to residential.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Explain zoning and process, please. What is it that, Keith, can you help me with that?
Sure, yeah, and let me explain, because for the record, Vice Mayor did call me and Jeff Cadums on this earlier today, and I did give Andy a heads-up, and Russell. The law basically says that if a municipality is allowed to consider changes to its zoning code, and it can essentially enact what's called a zoning in progress to prevent a flood of applications to come in while it's considering a text amendment, because to claim that they were grandfathered in or have their application pending. So what the law allows us to do is enact what's called a zoning in progress, which on the day that the council votes on that zoning in progress, no application can be heard or deemed to be accepted by the municipality that comes in until that zoning in progress has ended. So if anything is currently in the works, it is vested and grandfathered in, but if it has not been submitted yet, such item is not considered to be zoning in progress. So is not considered to be vested or in the queue at that time. So what Councilmember Jablonsky, Vice Mayor, excuse me, called me about, and actually Jeff Cadums, and then that's how I got it, is that there's a concern that larger tracts that are zoned community facility or otherwise in the town, because of the values that are occurring in Southwest Ranches, that developers are buying these larger tracts of land and are seeking to rezone them, predominantly CF, that's what we're seeing, to residential uses. And what Councilmember Jablonsky asked is that until we can look at our zoning code to determine what we may want to do with these large tracts that will be rezoning, I would like to put a halt on that and maybe look at the zoning code and potentially, and I don't know if you brought this up yet.
No.
And the second part of it is to consider a new zoning category, an option for developers who are rezoning their properties to look at, and if I may, I can present it. Councilmember Jablonsky brought up the fact that the rural estates category is one net acre or one gross acre for rezoning purposes. But the rural ranches category is strangely two gross, two net acres or 2.5 gross acres. So what Councilmember Jablonsky asked is if it's possible to create a new zoning category in the town, that he named Rural Ranches Plus, in which it would equal the rural estates to the Rural Ranches Plus, that rural estates would stay one net acre, one gross acre, and Rural Ranches Plus would be 2.5 gross or net acres, you know, so that the categories would be the same, so that in the event there is a subdivision of a CF property, primarily because that's all we have on those large tracts, that if they want to come in for a rezoning, that if the council did not want to accept an application for rural ranches or rural estates, whatever they may be applying for, that you would be able to suggest to that developer, whoever the applicant is, a new zoning category called Rural Ranches Plus, which would guarantee that those lots would be bigger. The way that Councilmember Jablonsky mentioned it on the phone to Jeff and I independently was that you all had to debate, and I apologize, these maths are making it difficult, you all had a debate concerning whether or not there would be additional property in which a developer could build a barn, okay? We had a lot of debate on that. Based on the fact that the council is not unanimous, the code has not been changed to look at that issue, but in the event that the council would adopt a new land use, a new zoning category, this Rural Ranches Plus, you're guaranteeing that there would be an additional half acre of usable property. That would make the lots bigger, so that you would not have that issue as to whether or not there would be room for agricultural or barns, because the lot on its own will be a much bigger lot, with less density and less massing. So that, I think I explained this.
Yeah, you nailed it. I mean, exactly as we discussed, so really, you know, whether it be a tennis court, an Olympic-sized swimming pool, whatever, you know, the property owner wants to do, but what this does is increases the minimum size, and it's a tool in the toolbox that we can use to keep us more rural. We don't have to use it, and this in no way changes anybody that's RR right now. This has nothing to do with that. This is only on a rezoning issue. I think it's something that, it's an option that we can use to, you know, make it less dense.
Right, right.
So what we were asked to do earlier today was do two things. One, whether or not, he asked whether or not he could do a zoning in progress, so that if he brought this idea up, there wouldn't suddenly be a proliferation of applications for people trying to get into RRR-E while this new category was being developed. And B, what it would take to create a new zoning category called RR Plus. And our response is, yes, you can enact your zoning in progress tonight, and the creation of that RR Plus category, which would just be 2.5 net, 2.5 gross acres, it's just basically the same as RE, we could, you know, get it on a February agenda first reading, second reading in March, so your delay is de minimis. You're talking 45 days.
A finite time.
To get it done.
For the zoning in progress, it would be a finite time.
Yeah, right.
Not a forever.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I could.
I was going, it was like a Part A and a Part B, but I needed, to explain Part B, I needed Part A to work first. And thank you, Keith, you did a great job of explaining it.
If I could ask, in theory, I do support this. I would like to see it accelerated as quickly as possible, because, you know, I follow what's going on in the markets, and Federal Reserve's meeting in March, and it looks like inevitably, interest rates will be increasing, and that.
Can't, I can't hear you.
It looks like in March, the Board of Governors of the Federal Reserve System are going to be meeting, and it looks clearly that they're going to be raising interest rates, and the potential buyers of these properties could be possibly adversely affected, because it could increase their interest rates in purchasing the property. That's why I would like it accelerated as quickly as possible. I support your concept, I support your concept, I would just like to see it accelerated as quickly as possible.
I think, I think we have some time delays legally speaking, and we have to put together, I don't want to rush this so fast, and that we, you know, we need to, we need to think this through, let Jeff and Keith do their work, but it sounds like by mid, this could be in place for voting by mid-March.
Okay.
You know, something with everything going on, and then we could remove the zoning in progress. So this solves a multitude of what I consider situations, not necessarily problems, where we have people coming in, buying property, and trying to put as many houses on it as they can. This elevates that, and it also helps with the agricultural reserve. I don't think that's going to fly, but this allows for whatever person wants to do with their property, they can do it. You know, if they want to put a barn on it, that's fine, they can put a barn on it. Want to put a tennis court, then put a tennis court, or a putting green, you know, whatever, a fairway, in some cases, you know, however that works. So that's where I want to go, and I'm running out of gas on that part, but I do have, I do have one more item after we move on this motion.
One more quick, one more quick question. Keith, explain two and a half net, two and a half gross, they're the same. I don't see them as the same.
Okay, so currently, the code reads that on rural estate category, it's, you have to have a one-acre lot, and that's net or gross, okay?
Right.
So, you know, one acre is one acre regardless. I asked Jeff earlier, and he's not here tonight, I said, why does RE say 2.5 net, sorry, gross, but two-acre net? That means that on the RR category, for some unknown reason, it was probably created in the 1960s, you can less out easements and other things from the property, and as long as you have two-point, two-acre net, you're a buildable lot. So I don't know how it occurred, it occurred way before the town, but, you know, all Councilmember Jablonsky was asking for was parity between the categories, saying if one acre is one acre, 2.5 should be 2.5, you shouldn't be able to make 2.52, which is what has happened over the years. Everyone has two acres, not traditionally the 2.5 that that category originally created. So he asked what would be the process of creating an RR Plus to fix that condition in the code, and Jeff said it's very easy, because you can still maintain an underlying RR land use category and have a RR Plus zoning, because it just means that your lot's going to be, you know, technically a half acre bigger. So it enables everyone to have bigger lots, and if you all see a major subdivision, especially as these houses of worship begin to be sold, because the value's finally there for them to be sold, and for some of the schools to be sold. And you're going to start seeing this, you know, repeatedly in the ranches, because now there's cheaper areas for houses of worship to be located and schools to be located, and as a result of that, there's going to be a lot of applications coming forward in the next few years for subdivision of CF properties. So Councilmember Jablonsky said before this proliferation occurs, he wanted to create this extra zoning category, so that if someone comes in with RE and everyone says, no, we're not going to allow one-acre lots there, and then they say RR, and you say, well, you know, we're not really happy with two acres there, but you know what, the original intent of the town was 2.5, you know, and we'll allow you to go 2.5. And just by way of an example, we did some quick math, and it really makes the lots bigger. You know, we looked, I think, at a 35-acre, we looked at a 40-acre, and it cuts back the density considerably, just that half acre requirement. So the item that would be before you tonight, that has the motion in a second, is whether or not you all will accept a zoning in progress to not accept any applications for rezoning from a non-residential category to a residential category, until you can look and see whether or not you're in favor or not of this RR Plus category. And we're telling you from a staff standpoint that we can get this on the agenda no later than the second meeting in February for first reading, and second reading would be the March agenda. So this would probably be the shortest zoning in progress that the town's ever had.
So this would not affect whatsoever an individual that wanted to give half of his five acres to his son to build? This would be changing a classification, for example, from CF to residential, not affecting any residential to residential dividing of property?
Correct.
All right.
Before we vote, yeah, I was just going to ask Bob.
Councilmember Hartman has comments.
Good.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Keith, I'm recognizing this clearly as a zoning change. Does this require a comp plan change as well?
No, the, an RR Plus category, as envisioned by the Vice Mayor, if the name sticks, great, but it can be put on any other category. You could even have an RE or rural estates land use and put in RR Plus zoning, because remember, zoning can be more stringent than land use, it can't be less. So while a rural ranch land use category allows two acres, this would be more stringent, because it would require 2.5. So it does not have anything to do with the comp plan, it's just adding a new category in the zoning code.
Thank you.
Look, can I, Circle S came in, it was RE, correct? When Circle S was developed, it was RE. That's where it had been plotted and zoned, am I correct? RE, one-acre estate, right? Circle S?
Right.
Right. That developer, would we have told him he'd have to do RR Plus?
No, that situation is completely different.
Okay.
Because that property was already a residential land use and zoning category.
Okay.
These are for categories of land where people are asking the town for special permission to change their site from either commercial, industrial, or community facility to a residential category.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, this has zero effect on the existing residential that's out there throughout our entire town. This has nothing to do with them.
Right.
I think that's a very important distinction.
All right.
Do you want to have a public?
Yeah, any public comment on this item? Seeing none.
Oops.
Seeing one. Come on up, please.
If you can just, before, just your name.
John Wegman. You could run into the same problem, because of the new regulations that the state or government has put on coming out and doing an inspection of a property, that said developer that wants to change the zoning, which I agree with, I think that's a fantastic idea, but they're going to have to do that same inspection.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and the state's going to come out, and they're very arbitrary. I can tell you just going through the situation, on what they decide is wetlands.
I don't disagree at all.
You know? And that said developer is not going to want to invest or make that change if he's got to deal with those kind of problems.
Right, I got you. You know, like I said, we have zero, I wish, I wish we had control over that. We have tried to get control over that.
Right.
We have no control over that.
Well, when you did, it was, it was an easy process.
It was.
It was a very easy process.
It was.
But now that they've added this new layer of...
But I will say this, that developers that are developers, they know all that. I mean, that's their business.
Yeah, it's factored into the overall cost. Of course it is, but it's still, it's a problem.
Yes.
And it affects everybody's property value. I don't care whether you own a acre or you own 58.
Absolutely. All right, any other comments? Deborah, if you could please call the role on that.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Albretton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and I'll close with one last thing. I'm just going to mention it, I'm not pontificating up here at this, but I will be rerunning for the District Two seat for that's coming up this year, and I just want to make that a formal announcement right now. I've asked Andy and Russell to start processing the paperwork, so.
Great, congratulations.
Hopefully, I'll be here next year.
Hope so. Good, awesome.
And I'm out of gas.
Thanks, thanks. All right, let me ask Bob, do you, would you like to do your comments at this time?
Yeah, and I'll be extremely brief. It's been interesting watching the meeting on YouTube Live and listening to it on the phone. There's about a five-second delay on YouTube, so I'm tending to stare at my phone. First, I'd like to congratulate the Astronite Parks Foundation for a very successful fundraiser. George, thank you for the thorough briefing. This is the first carnival I'm aware of held in our town, and from a financial and attendance standpoint, it appears to be a huge success. I went a few times, and each experience was quite different. My concern, you know, a number of residents were raising some questions and concerns, you know, around the time we were opening, so I wanted experience of myself. So I went to the opening on Thursday at about 5:00, and as the crowd grew, I noticed it was mostly young families early. I went back on Saturday about 7:00 p.m. and noticed, you know, again, as the crowd was growing, it was mostly elementary, middle-school kids, you know, it was family time at that point. And by 9:00, most of them had left, and they were being steadily replaced by groups of middle-school and high-school kids. All night, though, the carnival was packed. George mentioned there were a few bumps in the road, but overall, the event in my mind was safe, family-friendly, and operated very smoothly. This was a team effort, as George highlighted, so I'd like to congratulate and thank the Astronite Foundation team for a job well done. Next, I just wanted to thank the residents who came out tonight to express your concerns about the drainage and paving projects. I hope the mayor adequately answered your questions. We will respond to your concerns, and working with the administration will do the best to resolve the issues that were raised. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Bob. Rest and get well soon. All right.
Mayor, I'll go next. David said he has an hour's speech, so I don't think mine will be quite that long. I'd just like to say thank you to the residents from Green Meadows District Three that came out this evening. I'd ask that you contact me, if you would, in the next couple of weeks. I'm desperately trying to get the association that we once had back together, and I just need people to agree to a Zoom meeting, so we can get together. There's about seven or eight right now that have agreed that they'd like to talk. This isn't an association that's going to tell you, you got to paint your door purple or anything such as that. It's a way for us to communicate, it's a way for us to express. I thank Rod and Town Clerk Russell there. I've been out to 164th, 163rd, 162nd to see those problems, so if we could start an association, have a Zoom meeting once a month to discuss them, I'd really appreciate that. So reach out to me, and let's see if we can't get that started. Next, I'd like to say it was an honor on my part to represent Southwest Ranches in Tallahassee on Broward's Day, with the mayor, the vice mayor, and all the council there, doing whatever we could do to lobby what's best for town, and I believe we were the only council up there that had a full membership. All the others had pieces, but we actually had our full staff there to represent you, and I was, I was really proud to be a part of that. I saw on the news this evening that a lot of the speed limit signs... a part of that. I saw on the news this evening that a lot of the speed limit signs in Pembroke Pines are being tore down. I don't know if you saw that on the news. I noticed here in our area, Green Meadows, part of Deans Ranches, that the speed limit signs are being pulled up. They're not being knocked down with trucks like they are in Pembroke Pines, but somebody's actually wrapping a chain or something around and pulling them out of the ground. For what reason? I have no idea. But I give Emily a list, and we'll look at them. I'll drive through the area and see what I can find. But if you see a sign down, give us a call. But keep your eyes open because somebody's seeing something. You can't hook to one of those signs and pull it down without somebody in the area seeing something. So if you see something, you know, give the Davie Police Department a call. All my signs that I got and put out, those little speed limit signs with the kid and the dog on them, have disappeared off 166. I have no idea who took them, but I have a few left. I've been able to get them back out on 166, and some of the neighbors on some of the other streets have asked for them. I probably have about five or six left. So if anybody would like one, give me a call. I'd be happy to, to get that out. And I'll close with this. The Safety and Traffic Committee that I have been pushing for for a long time, and with the help of our town administrator, Andy, will have our first meeting on February the 1st at 7:00 here at Town Hall. There's five members on the board appointed by each one of our council members. It's a diverse board. Their work backgrounds and all are very diverse, so I'm really looking forward to this, to see if we can help with traffic, to see if we can help with crime, to see whatever it is that we can do as a community to reach out to each other. I'd encourage each and every one of you to come out on the 1st of February at 7:00 and enjoy the company. And I thank Andy for all his effort in getting this put together. Thank you so much. And with that, I'll turn it over to David, who has an hour's speech. It's up to you.
Not an hour.
Forty-five minutes.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, on your HOA, I think going back a few years, when I was president of Sunshine Ranches, we, when I initially came on, we were near broke. And we were having discussions about the possibility of not even publishing our Wagler magazine because the finances were really tight when I first came on board. And at the time, Steve had mentioned that the Wagler was a really, he felt that it was really important part to communicate to our neighbors. And that, that sank in with me. I was like, that's really important. So I think in developing your HOA, that a really important element will be to have a method to communicate that comes out every month, whether it be like just a mailer or something like that, just to start out something like that, because that's how Vince Valetta started the Wagler, with just a, a little letter that went out. And it's grown into a really good and popular publication, and we're, we got so many advertisers now. I think we got more advertisers than content at this point. But I think it's a really important thing to, to help develop your, your HOA, just to keep the word out. Now, going to some of the issues that I have. First of all, John, thank you for expressing that point. It's very important to keep the valuation of our properties about the wetlands, but as the mayor had said, it's gotten to the point that it's out of our control, and that's going to come to a bigger point that I have coming up in my comments a little bit later on. So with proactive and reactive issues that we were discussing, that's been an ongoing thing, and I do support the two issues that are to transition from reactive to proactive. And I think that'll help promote our rural lifestyle and keep us the way we are. Now, let's see. One issue that came up about two years ago, when three of us were running for election, is campaign signs. And what I'm primarily was concerned about is the campaign signs, there were some abuses on vacant property, where people on vacant property did not even know that there were signs on their property. And I think that this is something I would like to have addressed. Gary announced that he's running for reelection. Bob has told me personally that he's going to run for reelection. He hasn't mentioned it tonight. I was kind of expecting it, Bob. But, yeah, I think it would be something I would like it to tighten up that, and I don't know if it's possible. I spoke to Keith about it. I don't know if it's possible to differentiate the ones on vacant land or as opposed to occupied home. I know if I saw somebody's campaign sign in front of my home that I didn't like, I'd just pull it and throw it away. But if somebody's a private landowner or a landowner that has a vacant lot, they don't necessarily drive by their property every day, and they don't know what's on their property. And I think that those people must be informed somehow that there, there are signs on their property advertising for a candidate for the town council, and they may or may not agree with that person. So that's something I, I would like to explore before we get really into the heart of the elections this year. On Tisdore, they're, they're moving out of the west toward the east. I came home early, I guess last week, they put up the blue sign on Hollity Trail, saying that they're going to start the project, and all of a sudden I'm seeing land clearing on the side. So I'm glad to see it happening. I've had a lot of complaints about the road. Ed Gonzalez in the audience has asked me a few times, when are we going to get the road paved, Dave? Looks like they're starting. So it's, it's something that I'm glad is happening. I know I wanted Southwest 55th Street going over to Hunter Lane, put on there. I took a drive on that road one day, and it's atrocious. That's, it's a really, really, really bad road. That's something I'd like to have pushed up, especially since we're going to be getting some more of this federal funding. Let's see, last night at Sunshine Ranches, Homeowner Association meeting, there was some members and members of the audience discussing ideas for the Masters Academy property. And I can't go into actually what my positions were, but I can tell you what some of the members had called me about. Some members had expressed an interest of a horse trail on the inside property line of the southern portion of that property. Members had expressed to me no exit on Hancock Road. I guess the other issue is no, no builder size lots, that's kind of zoning in progress will probably take care of that. And that, and this is something that was really important because Gary had mentioned something about the dark skies ordinance, that these new residents be clearly informed of our dark skies ordinance. When we became elected, one of the first things we did was transition the dark skies ordinance from a passive enforcement to an active enforcement. And that, I think, is really important that our residents, because people move into our town, they don't even know we have a dark skies ordinance. And that's, that's something that, you know, I think it's really, really important. It keeps our town dark, keeps the rural nature of our Last, Tallahassee. Five of us went up there, and, you know, we went up there with some big ideas. And, you know, one of the big things that we voted on was to try to keep or make an exception to the statewide law that allows fireworks on, I think it's like three or four days. And we had big support from Representative Robin Bartman. She has done, she has been a hero for us up there on the issue. She actually sent a stuffed horse to the committee chair to try to push our fireworks ordinance, an exception to the, so it would just be basically, we could prohibit the use of fireworks in the town. We learned when we were up there, and it was, it was during a while of time that we were, when I was speaking to Nikki Freed during a, a meeting, that the issue's dead. For all intents and purposes, the issue's dead, and it really, really, really broke my heart. This is something that was presented to us from Sunshine Ranches HOA because they learned about it from Wellington. And Wellington likewise is a very rural equestrian community. And I was sent photographs of a horse that was startled by fireworks. It was a miniature horse that had, in Sunshine Ranches, that had, I guess, ran, was startled, and broke his neck, and, and passed away because of the broken neck. And I saw these photographs, and it really, really, really hurt. And I know that, like, larger horses can be trained. Don Main spoke to me. He says he trains his horse with gunfire. He rides his horse and he's shooting blanks in his gun. And that's great, but not all horses are trained that way. My dogs are scared of fireworks all the time. They're, they're, they're like paranoid. And I'm sure that it's a very common thing within our town. And, but the fireworks issue was so critical, and it's something that I really am not going to give up on. I'm going to come back on this, and I hope that next year we're able to do this. Actually, on Thursday, I had a meeting with State Representative Anthony Rodriguez, who's term limited out this year, but he's on the Rules Committee. And he says his part of Miami also has a lot of horses. And he felt that it was a very important issue for an equestrian community. So just want to let everybody know it's something that I'm not giving up on, and I don't think our council is going to give up on it likewise. Moving on, and it's back in the, the bigger issue of what I have termed Tallahassee Take Control, because that's really what they've been doing to us. Smaller governments, municipal governments. Let me see if I can get my computer back here. I fell asleep. Hold on a moment.
While you do that, I'm just going to jump in just for a second, that what David was referring to is we're formulating a new ordinance, a new proposal that we're going to try and get some energy behind next year, that will group all similar type communities that are rural like us, that are equestrian like us, so that it's not onesies and twosies, every community having to go up to Tallahassee and kind of look for this, but we can kind of band together and work together, and hopefully have more energy to get a, a, a solution that'll apply to all of us. So, you know, we're excited about working with that. Lobbyists feel like it's something that, that might have some legs, so we're going to work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Also, one issue that was important is our residents on the west side of town do not have a, a fire station. They don't have a, what we were requesting funding for, a West Broward Regional Fire Station and Emergency Operations Center. We had a meeting with the head of the state emergency management, and I asked him if he had anything to do or any control over Emergency Operations Center. He goes, I'm the man. But then when I brought up the issue about the funding, his backbone disappeared. And I mean, his backbone completely melted away. He says, I don't have anything to do with the funding. And that really frustrated me, because last year, we had the funding that was passed by the legislature. It was vetoed by the governor. And I'm certainly was told that it doesn't look like it's going to happen for us again. And we have residents out there that the timeframe for emergency services to apply, to come to their homes is just inexcusable. And the only way to do it is have a permanent station that can survive storms, because the, the, the mobile trailers that are out there, to me, are not strong enough. It's not sufficient for the town of Southwest Ranches. And that's what I really, really believe in, and I hope that we're able to get the property, buy the property. And I think we were seeking $900,000, and that's a really small amount of money for the state of Florida, with these big budgets that they're giving and their big tax breaks they're giving. And it really, really frustrated me. And once again, it's the state of Florida's government in Tallahassee is taking away bits and pieces and bits and pieces of local government. They want to have, they want to dominate everything. The way I'm seeing is where we do nothing except a rubber stamp of what they send to us. And there's one bill that has already passed the Florida Senate, and it is pending in the House, and it's CSCS 280 regarding local ordinances. I'm going to read the explanation to you. And this is really dangerous to small governments, especially like ours. Local ordinances, it authorizes courts to assess and award reasonable attorney fees and costs and damages in certain civil actions filed against local governments, requiring a board of county commissioners to prepare or cause to prepare a business impact estimate before the enactment of a proposed ordinance, requiring a county to suspend enforcement of an ordinance that is the subject of a certain legal action if certain conditions are met, authorizing a prevailing county to enforce the ordinance after a specified period, except under certain circumstances, requiring a governing body of a municipality to prepare a cause, or cause to be prepared, a business impact estimate before enactment of a proposed ordinance. Now, the way my understanding is, is if our town enacts an ordinance, and a business can somehow come up with their paperwork some way saying that this ordinance adversely impacted that business by 15% of that business's profits, that they can sue us and get attorney's fees from us, and, and suspend the enactment of that ordinance. This is the stuff that really hurts small governments, because it, it, it takes away our rights to enforce regulations to keep our town rural. And that's, this is one, the bigger picture of Tallahassee just really, really impacting us in an adverse way. So just keep this in mind as we go through the year, what Tallahassee's doing to us. And I close with that, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, David. All right. Appreciate all of the input this evening. I've got a few things. A lot of what I was going to talk about is covered, so won't go back into that, but I do have a few things that I want to touch on. I'll try and be as brief as possible. I wanted to just do a call, kind of a shout out to Davie PD again. We are so blessed to have them here and serving our town. Took another, we took a vacation around the holidays and did the Vacation Watch. That is a fantastic program. I just encourage everybody to do it. They, they, Davie PD, you, you log in at their, or you register on their website, and then they come around your house two, three times a day, different shifts. And it, your house, I feel, I feel like my house is under more control when I'm not there and Davie PD is checking on it two, three times a day than when I'm, than I am there. But just a fantastic job. Also, we got their report for the prior year, and I just wanted to read some stats out of that, just a few, because it's amazing. We are so fortunate to have them here. Detective Habalas, please pass on our, our thanks and appreciation to the whole. It's, it's definitely a team, team effort there. And so, but crime decreased in the last year by 25%. The service calls, that's Davie PD showing up to residents and, and helping them, increased 11 and 1/2%. And, and traffic accidents actually decreased 40%. So, you know, that's, that's pretty amazing changes in a single year. And, and I think a lot of it is our residents doing the right thing, a lot of it is Davie PD being there when we need them. So really appreciate that. David, I wanted to mention, you, you brought up a topic, and I'm just going to add something real quick to it. I do think that we need better communication to, to Realtors and to new residents and to developers that are considering Realtors working in our town, or new residents moving into our town, or developers that are considering working in our town. And so I'm working with Andy to put together a, a document that will really kind of make use of our website, point people in the right direction, so they, they know before they get involved what kind of community we are. And, you know, we're not Weston, we're not Pa... And, you know, we're not Weston, we're not Pembroke Pines, and it's better for people to know that right up front, rather than getting involved in something and starting to invest money here and there and find it out later. So we're going to try and put together a communication piece for that, and I think that'll be helpful. I wanted to just congratulate somebody. Vanessa Redman here has done an amazing, she has been certified as a Certified Professional Public Buyer. And what, that's a lot, a ton of work. It is a lot of studying, an exam. I don't even know what's much of it, but I know it's a ton of work, and that you have gone through it, you have been certified, and really appreciate that. You know, it's important for our town that not only, you know, when we raise the taxes, but that they're spent properly. And this certification and what Vanessa does is our assurance that those things are being done properly and that the dollars are being spent wisely and that we're getting qualified bidders in and we're spending our money properly. Vanessa, thank you for all the work that you did to get that certification. It is going to benefit our town immensely, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate everybody's support. Marty, I know, supported her in this effort, and so appreciate that as well. The last thing I wanted to bring up, and not sure if we wanted, if we need to take a vote on this, I think I'd like to have one, is we have gotten back the report from Davy, they sent us a letter, on the intersection at Sheridan and Volunteer. And they proposed, basically, basically, they gave two alternatives. One was the alternative that we are proposing, and the other one is the alternative we're not proposing. You know, one is not to put the turn lane in there, the other one is. But because they did these two alternatives, what I would like us to do is get on board with them 100% with the proposal that they have put out there, which is aligned with what we are proposing and would like to see, to basically maintain things, pretty much, there's some minor changes, but pretty much maintain it the way it is. And I think that if we can both get in alignment on that, then we come with a united view to Broward County.
Mayor, I know you have a resolution on the no-turn lane previously. So if the plan that you're looking to support is that plan that shows the no-turn lane, there would be nothing improper with your town administrator to send a letter to the county saying we are in full support of the Davy Plan that does not do a turn lane? Or in the alternative, if you want another resolution, we can bring it back to the next council meeting, but you've already passed that.
Well, we have, but it's slightly different than what Davy did. And I think it would be a lot more powerful for us to say, "We are in support of this proposal from Davy," so that it is both of us together supporting the exact same proposal. You know, I don't know how they could go, I mean, anything can happen, but I don't know how they could go against us when we're both proposing the exact same thing.
So if there's no rush, if I could draft that for the next agenda?
That would be awesome. That would be awesome. All right, let's do that. And is everybody okay with that? Are we good?
Yeah, I just want to mention, I was there the other day, and I never really noticed this until this has come to the forefront, but there's a dedicated U-turn lane right there where the traffic is stopped, you've got the green arrow, and it has a sole purpose of making a U-turn to either go back west or to go to Volunteer.
That's correct.
And I think that's pretty, I used it, and it was, to me, I felt safer as a driver than like trying to dodge oncoming cars, you know, because everybody stopped right in front of me.
Right.
You know, and you've got the dedicated arrow.
Absolutely.
So I think that's really the best option.
Awesome. Yep, I think so, too. All right. So with that said, that concludes my comments. What I'd like to do is we have had a very patient gentleman, Daniel, here with the, he's going to, regarding the kiosk item that's on our agenda, I think it's item number 10. If the council is agreeable, I'd like to move that to the next item, and then we'll pick up with our regular agenda again.
I agree.
What about legal and administrative?
We'll get back to it.
Okay.
We'll get back to it.
No problem.
I'll make a motion to move item 10 to now.
Perfect. Perfect. Great. Any discussion on that, concerns? Okay, if you can please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonski?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, item number 10. Man, no, I messed you up.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the issuance of a purchase order in the amount not to exceed $15,000 and zero cents to advanced kiosks for a self-service lobby kiosk, approving a fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget adjustment from the general fund, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. So we have a presentation. Daniel?
If you would come up first and then we'll...
Yeah.
...take it on the bottom.
Welcome to Southwest Ranches. We normally get to this a little quicker, but it's been a while since we met, so we had some other business, but thank you for your patience, appreciate it.
That's okay, I understand. I know how these things go.
Awesome. So why don't you maybe just give us a quick overview of what this kiosk is going to provide for our town?
Well, you know, we've been moving into the electronic age for some time now, and, you know, we're definitely here. And with the advent of the internet and computers, we've got so much power to be able to do things so efficiently electronically, rather than doing things on paper. You know, paper's all well and good, but if you convert to electronic, you can do things much quicker, and the storage of electronic data and electronic documents is so much more efficient than paper, obviously. So the idea of moving towards electronic in the permitting for building permits in particular is something that has been encouraged for some time now. And as a result, the Broward County Board of Rules and Appeals, of whom I happen to be the chair, I'm also a resident of Davy and a lifetime resident of Florida. I was born in Fort Lauderdale, but I've lived in Davy since 1981. But I'm the chair of the Board of Rules and Appeals, which, the Board of Rules and Appeals is involved with the building code, and we oversee the enforcement of the building code throughout Broward County. We've established a program of, a grant program to help cities to pursue the electronic permitting process. And as a result, we've made a grant to Southwest Ranches in the amount of $7,500. And I'm talking with Russell, I know that that's going to be put to good use in establishing a kiosk to proliferate the electronic permitting process, so that people can come in, use this kiosk, and be able to process their permits. They can scan documents, they can scan plans, and they can do the initial permit applications and processing electronically. And we're happy to do that, and we're happy to see that Southwest Ranches is going along with that, and we're encouraging it to all the cities in Broward County.
We're excited for it. We're excited for it. Yeah, Russell, did you want to?
I have a question, I apologize.
No, just, I know we got a presentation here, did you?
Yes, I'm ready for the presentation, if you will, Mayor. So I want to thank Daniel and the Board of Rules and Appeals for their contribution, first of all. So thank you for that. That did provide the seed money, and we'll kind of get into what the self-service kiosk does. So, yeah, let's just go ahead and go to the next slide. So the town remains on a never-ending search to improve service delivery, and pre-pandemic, the town hall lobby, as many of you may have recalled, received substantial foot traffic, oftentimes with significant wait times. So an analysis of town hall visits revealed that a majority of our visitors sought service from the town building, zoning, and engineering departments. So, I think you skipped one. Go back. There you go. So mirroring the concept of a self-service kiosk to reduce customer wait times and enhance the customer service experience, the concept of acquiring and installing a self-service kiosk that would extend beyond building permits generated requests for services was examined. Initial examination revealed that the concept was cost prohibitive, to put in the kiosk by ourselves with just the town footing, the bill was just going to be too expensive. But in August of 2021, we had applied for and received this grant that Mr. Labbidge is talking about from BORA, to enhance e-permitting. So the BORA grant, along with a 50% funding commitment for the town's portion of the kiosk cost from our town building department services provider cap government, provided the basis to make this project a reality. The solution proposed is a kiosk provided by Advanced Kiosks, a company based out of Concord, New Hampshire, with hundreds of installations across the country. The solution, as you can see here, is an actual depiction of one of their kiosks, will be equipped with a voice-over IP handset that will interface with our current telephone system and will allow customers to contact staff directly from the lobby. It will also be equipped with a document scanner, allowing users access to scan and attach documents for submittal into our permitting system or for emailing to town staff. It will also be equipped with a Magstrip reader, providing ability to interface with our current payment credit card processing system. The solution is a component-based system, ensuring that all peripherals, including the computer, the monitor, the printer, and the scanner, can be swapped out should they become damaged or obsolete, ensuring that the town will have a relevant solution for many years to come. The solution will run XAMIC software, which will provide an easy-to-use interface for end-users while providing potential, I'm sorry, powerful tools, including remote management, kiosk web security, reporting, and analytics for town staff. Town staff will be establishing key performance indicators, or KPIs, such as number of users, average session time per users, and so forth, to ensure that the kiosk is meeting project goals. Upon implementation, KPI reporting will be included in the monthly reports submitted to the town council, so that you can see that we are or hope to be on schedule. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that the town council may have regarding the project.
What's the, kind of the timeframe for this?
So the vendor is waiting for a PO to be issued. We can't issue the PO until you guys decide to approve that.
Pulling up the train, huh?
So tomorrow, if I can get a PO issued, we should get the product in place in 60 days. Obviously, there will be a learning curve, be some implementation, setting up the software. We have an implementation team as part of this agreement, this agreed-upon price, to help us implement the project. So I would suspect that within 90 days, 90, probably 90 to 100 days, we should be up and running and allowing the customers to use it.
Great. And where is, we picked out a specific location that's going to be in town hall?
Not a specific one as of yet, but it will more than likely be towards the beginning of the entrance to the lobby, so close to kind of where, you know, where we keep the two chairs with the round table? That's kind of where we're eyeballing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Got a couple questions.
Yes.
So Russell, yesterday, you and I had kind of a lengthy discussion on the technology itself, and you were going to try to get some answers on Windows 11 compatibility and upgrade, you know, we're looking at Windows 11 being upgraded very shortly on, you know, most computers that are compatible. And as we discussed, it probably wouldn't be the wisest investment to buy something that we then have to turn around and replace the computer on it to upgrade to Windows 11, since that's imminent. So I don't know if you've got any feedback from the vendor, or if that's still something you're looking at.
Yes, I did speak to the vendor today, and we had a lengthy conversation. He felt that the computing processing power on the computer is more than adequate for the applications that will run off of it and what we will be asking this to do, including scanning, printing, and so forth. As far as the Windows 11 software, it's not as tried and true in government applications, if you will, as Windows 10 is. So he feels that going with something that's proven in this type of environment is a less risky venture. There have been obviously other Windows updates that haven't proven to be, or that have had some security vulnerabilities, and he's concerned that if we put something that hasn't been tried and true as much as Windows 10 has, that could present some issues for us in the future. So his recommendation would be to go with Windows 10. Could we do Windows 11? We could, if we really, really wanted that, but his suggestion, his recommendation, is to stick with the Windows 10 operating system.
Okay, well, Windows 10 will be supported in 25, so we have about, you know, three more years. I'm just, I just looked it up.
Okay. Was there any other concerns that you had, council member?
We discussed it yesterday.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Any other questions, comments from the council?
I'm good.
Is there any public comment on this item? There is. Go ahead, no.
Why wouldn't you help?
Oh.
I think I'm finished, unless you've got anything else for me.
All right.
But again, the Board of Rules and Appeals is happy to help, and thank you for your support in the past as well. Thank you.
Appreciate it, absolutely. Thank you.
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. Couple of things. Is this system up and working anywhere else in Broward County, number one? And what are the reaction of that municipality to that system? Is there any knowledge or data on that? Number two, while reading it, I was looking at that it's 13,000 change, yet we've got $15,000 allocated for that, yet in other resolutions that we have where we're getting contracts, it has the exact amount, not the generic $15,000. Why is this one different than the other contracts where you're saying the exact to the penny? And do we have something that we need to add that extra money for, for the 15,000? You know, 13, $1,500? Is there a reason for that? If not, let's change the resolution to read the exact amount. So what I'd like to know is, having no knowledge at all on this system, or I've been hearing about it before, A, does any other municipality, or are we the guinea pig?
Right.
Number two, if there is there, what problems have they had integrating it into their system?
Great.
And how can we avoid those?
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment on that? Seeing none. Russell, have we, can you kind of share what?
Yes, Mayor, and I appreciate the questions. So the first question about whether or not this application, or this project has been installed in another city in Broward County, the answer is no. And I don't, I'm not afraid of that. I think it's, we, you know, there's nothing wrong with being the first, as long as you have a good project in place and a good plan. This vendor has provided kiosks all over the country in various different applications, including cities. It just so happens that there's none in Broward County. In fact, one of the things that I wanted to do was to visit other cities to go ahead and see how it would work in place, and unfortunately, there is no other applications in Broward County. We did let out a competitive procurement on this particular kiosk, and unfortunately, we got no responses. So it wasn't like we tried to, you know, get the best price and go out there and see what else was out there. So we did a competitive procurement, we didn't get any responses, we contacted Advanced Kiosks, and they gave us GSA pricing on this, so the price is very competitive, I think. That's one. As far as why we went with a not to exceed 15,000, this is a new project, and we don't know what type of contingencies we're going to run into. So I felt that it was prudent to, you know, have some kind of buffer. We didn't choose every possible option that the manufacturer makes, as far as when we spec this out. So having a little bit of contingency money there, I felt was prudent in case we run into something that we just didn't foresee. Certainly, if it's not council's pleasure to do that, we can certainly look at doing something differently, but I think it would be prudent to go ahead and plan for that contingency in case we run into something.
Great. Yeah, Noel. What's that, Bob?
Yeah, yeah, quick question. How much contingency did you plan? 5%, 10%, more?
Well, the pricing was 13,000. The total pricing from them was 13,446, so I put in a buffer of about 1,600. So just above 10%.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And by, by the way, for the record, Section 3 did call out the exact
Yes.
buffer.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to mention, you know, to thank you for your support in doing this. It's really quite generous. It's, you know, half the cost right up front, and I want to thank BORA for participating in this, and we can move forward with this. I think it'll be a really good asset for the town.
Excellent. Any other comments from the council on this?
I'm good.
Good? Yeah, I'm excited about it, I'll be honest with you. I think it's, this is an area that our residents, I've heard on multiple occasions, they've been frustrated at different times because they haven't been able to get the right paperwork, and to be able to, you know, put it online and get it so that it's easier to work with, I think it's, it's great. I think it'll be good. I think George will be the first one to use it. And so, but this is, this is awesome. And I do think the contingency makes sense, I really do. It's a new, it's new for us, and so let's have a little, little leeway there in case something pops up.
Right, and we certainly don't want to spend it.
Yeah, yeah.
If we don't have to spend it, we won't spend it.
Right.
Yeah, let's just go back into the general fund.
Absolutely.
Building fund.
Oh, building fund.
Very conservative contingency, and it's very reasonable.
Yeah. Bob, Bob just mentioned that 10% is a conservative contingency, and it's reasonable, and I agree with that. All right, seeing no other comments, if we can please call the roll on this item.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry.
I don't think we had a motion on this.
Oh, we haven't had a motion? Well, we better get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Man, we did everything.
We made a motion to move it, we just didn't
All right. Okay, awesome. All right. Could please call the roll.
Certainly. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yeah.
He said yes. Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Brakers?
Yes.
Let's see, unanimous vote, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
All right, so let's go back to item number seven, legal comments.
None, thank you, Mayor.
Oh, that's music to our ears. All right, number eight, administrative comments.
Actually, Mayor, in the interest of time, I think you guys did a wonderful job covering everything that was relevant and was important. The only thing I will do is offer my congratulations again to Vanessa on her certification, and kind of as an intro almost into the next subject at hand, the next matter, I will tell you that she and I have spoken, and as much as we're going to ask you to approve the updated procurement guide tonight, she already has a lot of ideas on how it can be improved and made better, and I'll say that we will expect to have this back before you, not changing thresholds and things like that again,
Yeah, yeah.
But really cleaning it up and making it better, and I look forward to working with her on that.
Awesome.
So I'll just say that, and I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Excellent. Great. That's sound, you know, that's, that's perfect. That's the way it should be. Awesome. All right, so, item number nine.
Mayor, item number nine is an ordinance on first reading. It's an ordinance to the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending all sections of the town of Southwest Ranches procurement code, codified in the town's code of ordinances, including to modify the purchasing thresholds, bringing the procurement code into conformity with recently enacted 2 CFR 200 federal regulations, state statutes, and Broward County code, to provide authorization for the use of electronic transmissions, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the town's code of ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second. One thing that I do want to call out on this item is that the threshold for the town administrator to do the approval has increased from 10,000 to 25,000. I think that's a significant increase, and I just want to make sure it's out on the record and everybody's aware of that. I don't have a problem with it. Andy has been outstanding with, even when he has the ability to approve things often, he brings it to the council because he wants it out in the open and makes sure everybody's aware of it and everybody's on board. So, so I definitely have no concerns from that standpoint. My only hesitation in that, and I just want to get it on the record, is that as much as we want to keep Andy around here for 100 years, you know, he, you know, there will, there will come a day, hopefully it's, you know, 50 years or so from now, but there will come a day when he's not here anymore, and so we want to make sure that we do, whatever we do, we do it from a position standpoint we're comfortable with it. Yeah.
And Mayor, and I appreciate that, and not to step on the conversation amongst the council, but finance does have a presentation to walk you through some of the changes, some of the differences, and I would ask you just to hold your comments until after
All right.
But the first subject that you brought up is one of the subjects that's covered within the presentation.
Perfect. All right. Let's do the presentation then. Yes, council member.
Maybe before or after, since we are on the topic of expanding authority, maybe it would be wise for Andy just to point out to the public the areas that, he explained it to me yesterday, the areas that he feels that it may be beneficial, emergency situations and such.
All part of the presentation.
Part of the presentation, but thank you, Bob. Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, if it's part of the presentation, let's move on.
All righty. Awesome.
Did we want to entertain a motion first, or do you want to see the presentation first, Mayor?
I think we
Motion?
We do have a motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, we do have a motion in a second. Yep. All right, Marty.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I turn the floor over to our certified professional public buyer.
Excellent.
And I wanted also to add the fact that most of her certification was obtained on a scholarship at no cost to the resident.
Awesome.
So that was wonderful accomplishment as well, so we appreciate that. Tonight, we're going to get a little short introduction. I'm very excited about this manual. It completely provides a detailed policy and procedures on a departmental, by departmental basis. Vanessa will go into the major changes that are involved, but I do want to thank the committee. This has been a three-year process, not due to COVID, but believe it or not, it was due to the changes, modifications to the federal rules and regulations that have taken place that delayed us further guidance to actually bring forward the final regulations to you. So with that in mind, I'd like to think, thank the entire committee, they were town administrator appointments, most of everyone is in the audience tonight, December, Sandy, Emily, Rod, and of course, Russell, our Assistant Town Administrator, Town Clerk, and finally, our legal department. They worked hard, especially Richard DeWitt. And Keith, I'd like to thank to get this put in place, and with that, I'll turn it over to Vanessa. Thank you.
Awesome.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the town, and, you know, you caught me off guard, I wasn't expecting that, so I could only respond with a thank you, but of course, you know, Marty is, working for Marty in the finance, and his encouragement and Andy to actually pursue this has definitely been an amazing thing. I love working for the town.
Awesome.
So now, I won't say thank you again to everybody, but I do want to say, this is a short presentation on our new purchasing manual that outlines the legally required changes to our town's procurement code. Tonight's version of the purchasing manual has been already approved by the granting agency that's providing the 250,000 funding for our stormwater master plan bid that will be advertised after the manual is ratified by you, the town council. Can you go to slide two, please? Now this is where, I hope you can all see, and we compare the town current ordinance thresholds to our new recommended thresholds. Firstly, you'll notice that the purchases under $250, which were previously Level 0, are now consolidated within Level 1. And then the second change is the recommended Level 3 has been modified to allow purchases, approval of purchase orders between 10,000 and 25,000 with town administrator approval only. Now, in support of this change, with this recommended Level 3, we did some research. For 2021, there were only 11 agenda items between 10,000 and 25,000 brought before the town council. Three were for projects using vendors with existing continuing contracts that were previously approved by town council. Six were for projects that had program modifications appearing in our budget book, which were previously approved by town council when the budget was adopted. One was an emergency purchase, and one was an unbudgeted expense for less than $11,500 for equipment that failed and needed to be replaced. For fiscal year 2020, there were only six agenda items between 10,000 and 25,000, and all were previously approved through the budget or continuing contracts that were previously approved by town council. So an important thing to note is that any purchases that are not budgeted and approved by town council will always be included in the agenda, and a budget adjustment approved, no matter what the value, even if it's a dollar. So this recommendation that we're making is because it will reduce the time it takes for a project to be approved, a purchase order created, and the notice to proceed issued by a minimum of three weeks, which is going to greatly improve the performance of the staff and efficiency in our town. Slide number three. Okay, now this is interesting. This slide shows the Florida statutes, and it compares it to our town statutes, our town threshold. Florida statute requires that any competitive procurement occurs for Category 2 if the amount is greater than 35,000. Our town Level 4 requirement of anything greater than 24, 25,000 is therefore more restrictive. Slide number four. So our new purchasing manual meets the town's desire to comply with all Florida statutes, all the grant requirements, and the new 2 CFR 200 rules. Plus, it includes a local vendor preference that will provide extra points during bid evaluations for our local vendors. And that's just a brief description of a Southwest Ranches vendor. Then finally, finally, we want to thank everyone involved in the creation of this manual. As Marty mentioned, most people are in the room, and we want to add that procurement will continue to use transparent purchasing procedures that will allow commodities and services to be produced at the lowest, sorry, to be purchased at the lowest possible cost, the highest service level, and consistent with the quality that our town needs, and the requirements that our town requires. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so, thank you for walking us through the document. Is there any further discussion on this item? Is there any public discussion on this item?
Is, when you said 25,000, we used to have 25,000 during the dark days, and it was abused, and I'm still leery. How many of the times that has been the difference between the 10 and the 25 that she committed? Took more than three weeks, other than that. That's what I'm saying. If it's only three weeks difference that we're going to be saving, I don't understand. I can understand if you want to put the 25,000 in place for an emergency situation, which is declared by the mayor and maybe one other council member, any other council member, that would be fine, to pay it then 25, so we can do the emergency things when we have to do the pickup after a hurricane, or a tornado, or some other item. But I'm leery about, and this is nothing about Andy, our administration now, but I'm remembering the dark days, when the 25,000 was abused and we could never figure it out. So
Yep.
I can't verbalize what I'm feeling actually at this point, so, anyhow, I'll leave it at that.
Duly noted.
Thank you, Noel. Yeah, I mean, that was, that was my, that was kind of my point when I was bringing up as well, so I get what you're saying.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, we all, many of us were experienced where the money just flowed out. Is there any other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, it's closed. Now, Vanessa, if I understood properly, what you were saying was that between that, up to the 25,000, that it would come before the council because it would be part of a continuing contract, it would become, would come before the council if it was outside of what the budget had already, that had been approved by the council, had already approved, so if it varied from that.
Yes. What I was saying is, most things are coming before you more than once.
Right.
Because you're already approving them, and then when we go to spend it, it comes before you again, which is a delay on us. You've already said, go ahead with this project. Now, we, you know, we found the vendor, and then we come back again for you to approve the vendor.
Yeah.
That won't happen now, Andy would be able to approve that. But if it had never come before you, it would have to come before you
Yeah, so that
Because we'd need a budget adjustment.
Right.
Nothing can be spent without you seeing it at some time.
So that makes me feel a lot better about the change, to be honest with you.
Right, and I looked in other cities, strange, some of the cities, for example, Davie, their ratio is 35,000, and it's approved by the procurement officer. So, you know, I think 25,000 and the fact that it's already come to you, and Andy helps to speed up the project, especially because we're a small town.
Right.
So time is crucial in that town.
Right.
The other item I'd like to, I'd like to remind you all is that under current town administration, you never had a thorough budget book with project planning and preparation and transparency. And this is all new, new being 10 years new.
Right.
Prior to the old antiquated thresholds. So you have safety in place under this system, due to the fact of much thorough transparency, planning, and adoption well advanced. So we're trying to avoid redundancy through this whole process.
Perfect. Perfect. And it's not uncommon for us to hear from residents to say, why does things take so long? So if we can, if we can still feel comfortable, from my perspective, if we can still feel comfortable that everything at one point or another is coming before the council and is being approved, and we can speed up the process, I think that's probably a good thing. So, any other council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
With current administration, I'm perfect, I, I'd give Andy the key to my house. That's how much I trust the administration. Is there a way that this could be, like, revisited at the, in a future date if a new town administrator ever comes in?
Certainly could, but I think that the wise thing to do is to always make a decision like this not based upon an individual or a personality. We should, we should make it based on what we're comfortable on, assuming, you know, if the rules are not, if the controls are not in place, then we've got a problem. But what I've heard But what I've heard is that we do have controls in place. We're gonna, we're gonna see those numbers either in the budget or in a separate contract that is going to come in front of us. So what we're talking about is really a secondary approval when we actually spend the money to see it again, a second time. And, and, and so, so that, that makes me, that makes me a lot more comfortable that we are seeing these.
I'm comfortable with that.
We're good? We're good? Bob, are you, are you comfortable?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Marty, if we pass this, consider your approval to retire.
I don't think so. I don't agree with that. But I like the sentiment. All right, awesome. All right.
Steve, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. All right, if we can please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very good. Item number 11, please.
Item number 11 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order piggybacking off the city of Fort Lauderdale's agreement with East Sciences Incorporated for environmental permitting services in the amount of $20,280 and zero cents for the town's annual report required by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, permit number FLS 00016-004, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing for an effective date.
All right, this is required. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Yes, this is, this is an item that is required, so it's something we gotta do. Is there any, any comment on this? Any public comment on this? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 12.
Item 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, supporting the advancement of the Green Meadows Draining Project, SWRA 022, for Broward County Transportation Surtax Program funding, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents deemed necessary to help effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. So Rod, maybe you can come up and just talk a little bit about this project. I mean, I think we're right on, we've been right on topic on this tonight anyway, so, and there was some comments earlier that, you know, maybe some of these projects weren't required, so I'd like for you to, if you could just talk about what this is going to do for the town.
Absolutely. So this is really just a support resolution, though, for this particular item. We had SWR 022 was in a design phase in the surtax capital plan, and what we're trying to do is because we're so accelerated in the Green Meadows drainage overall and the construction, we can move this project up to construction instead of just leaving it in design. So we had to go through a couple of different submittals as far as documentation goes, and the surtax committee, the representatives from the county are on board with us moving it and accelerating it. So as we move forward to construction, we'll have the money we had in design allocated to, to construction. So what it's gonna do, it's gonna allow us to tie in the piece that's on 162nd of the current system, we're putting in now, and attach it to the Dyke system. So it's gonna run east, and it's gonna connect to the system that's already on Dyke Road.
Very good.
So we'll have multiple avenues for water to go.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Rod. All right. Is there any council comment on this item?
No, I'm happy it's going through.
Awesome. Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item?
Joseph Altchul, 164th Terrace. Once again, you know, I'm really not clear, I mean, I understood what he just said. I don't know where I would see that, you know, and again, maybe I, number one, start with the process. You know, was this ever addressed with the affected neighborhoods? Is this part? I know that when I came here in 2020, when we had that workshop that was promised there would be another workshop with proper notice that didn't happen, there was talk about advancing this project further north on 164th Terrace, further north of 54th Place, areas that are not affected by flooding. And I don't know if that's affected by this. I don't know how I would know whether or not this addresses that. What I know is that we're not consulted in our neighborhood, we're not told what's going on, you know, perhaps the feeling is that we don't need to know. I, I, I don't know.
No.
But, but, yeah, I, I just don't know. All I know is, you know, other than coming on 20 minutes' notice in 2020 and the promise of more workshops, you know, to, to gauge the neighborhood's response, that hasn't happened. And, you know, I, I heard the description today. Is that the entirety of it? Is it a connection from 162 East heading towards Dyke Road, Dykes Road, or is there more? And where would I look to see that and know that, other than what was just stated in a very brief presentation? So if it's more than that, I, I really have difficulty with not being able to know what that is and not being, having an opportunity to, to address it. So I, you know, if it's more than that, as I look at this resolution, you know, I, I see that, that what they're asking for is a resolution from the town stating support for the project, which is required to establish funding eligibility. I understand getting free tax money is a great thing. And, and as Mr. Mayor said earlier, you know, projects always look good on paper. And so you can do stuff for free, or with tax dollars, it's not apparently costing the taxpayers, you put it on paper and it looks good. But you've, you've heard about the drainage nightmares that, that we're having, and we don't need to continue that just because there's free money out there. And so I, I would, you know, again, go back to what Noel Hollingsworth said earlier about when it's not broken, don't fix it. And if you're going to do something more, tell us. Let us know where we can find this information. But in the meantime, I ask you, there's no reason for you to go and certify to Broward County that this is in the best interest of Southwest Ranches residents without Southwest Ranches residents knowing what this means and having an opportunity to speak about it and evaluate it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment on this?
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. Again, we're back to residents not being notified or having any, one of the things that I asked this council to put in place. The other thing is something that I spoke with Gary about when we, 199th was being done, and that is that any dirt excess from this, any project, stay the property of Town of Southwest Ranches and be stored in such a place. And if you take a look at Fishing Hole Park now, there's a lot of dirt there just from the four streets that were done, which makes me wonder, how much dirt did we get rid of before in previous projects? But that's dirt under the bridge. So, but here we got another project where we're going to be digging a hole, and there's going to be possibly some dirt left over. And I want that to remain part of Southwest Ranches property and to be stored in such a manner that we can use it in the future, because dirt costs, we have to buy it.
Right.
And what we have now is an amazing amount of dirt that's over at the Fishing Hole Park, pardon me, Country Estates Fishing Hole Park. And the future projects are going to create more dirt, and we need to keep that because we need to use it someplace, and we will be using it someplace in the future. And hopefully, the Infrastructure Board and Parks and Recreation Board can figure out where we need that dirt and start facilitating a way to put it there and improve our parks.
Right.
Or our roads, or whatever we have to do. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Noel. Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to know, and maybe administration can answer, how does this dovetail into the stormwater master plan that we got the, the big grant for?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna touch on that a little bit. No, 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 it's good. It's, it's a, it's a great question.
Quick question, Mayor. Since Rod's here, Rod, you and I have met a number of times, and I've gotten three or four different maps at different times from you. Is there a map that maybe Joe could pick up from you that would show the existing, the proposed, and those that are coming up? I know that was very helpful for me to get that map to see. Would it be available to the residents, or could they get one here from Town Hall as to when it will start and what it's proposed to do? I know that map was, was a great help to me. So, I mean, that might help, Joe, you know, touch bases with Rod there.
Shouldn't we have the opportunity to see that before it's voted on and approved? Shouldn't we have the opportunity to look at it before you're now tearing up the rest of, of Green Meadows? You know, God knows, I, I hope you don't use the same contractor who you used for the other one, but shouldn't we have, shouldn't we have that opportunity? I, I mean, I don't understand, you know, how you're, you're gonna say, okay, here's a map, now this is what's already proposed, this is what's in the future, without it ever having been, you know, brought in a meaningful way for, for public comment?
Thank you. Okay. So I want to make a couple, just a couple responses on that. Joe, I think, I think your, your comments are on target, okay? We, we did attempt to do that with the workshop that you've referred to. There were some issues with that. It wasn't in the best circumstances, it was outside, the whole nine yards. And so, but, but it's not like we, we proceeded on this without trying to inform the residents. And so I just want to make that point. So your, your point is valid, but we did make an attempt to do that. I also, I wanted to say that this project, you know, the thing with, with a lot of projects like this, but it's especially true of drainage projects, is that normally with a drainage issue, if there's a problem, it's because there's some water that's stuck over here that needs to get over there. That's, that's kind of the definition of a drainage problem. If it could flow over there easily, it wouldn't be a drainage problem, it would be draining. And so inevitably, in most drainage projects, what happens is you've got a, a problem over here that needs to be solved, a solution over there, and you've got residents in between. And that's, I think, what you're experiencing there. A lot of residents have said, you know, I don't have a drainage problem, so why am I incurring these issues? And it's because we've got to move the water from, from point A to point B. So I do think that the maps that we're talking about here would be helpful. This is, this is a multi-phase project. I think if you, you know, you looking at it, and I would, I, I want to hear your feedback after you've looked at it, to be honest with you. But there, there's multi-phases. This isn't the entire project, so, so let's get out there and, and let's publish the maps. Let's, I want to hear what you have to say and what other residents have to say on it, and, and let's, you know, make sure we're doing it right. But I will say that, you know, that it's not uncommon that in a drainage project, that there are people, there's those consequences of people between the two that, that get affected by it and, and don't directly see it. Okay, last time.
In the, in the council memorandum, it talks about that the reason for this is, is to address the runoff from Dyke Road, to be able to discharge it into a secondary canal. Now, my understanding from my discussion with Rod, and he'll correct me if I misunderstood him, is that the flooding issue on Dyke Road has been resolved as a result of the drainage project where it is now, not going into future, future issues, but that that issue's already been resolved. So that, you know, and maybe I misunderstood it, but if that's the case, then I think we have to ask, okay, exactly your point that you just made, where is it that we're looking to move water from which point to which point?
Absolutely.
If it's already been resolved? That's number one. Number two, if we were paying for this ourselves and not getting a grant, would we still be doing this project?
Thank you. Yeah, Rod, if you can please. I'm gonna address the second question first, but then I want Rod to, you to address the first one. And the answer to that is literally, I'm gonna say eight, I was gonna say 20 years ago, but I want to be literal, probably 18 years ago, I was on the Drainage Committee, and we identified different problem areas in town, and this was one of them. So yes, we would be wanting to do this problem, this, this project, whether we had the money or not. This was not, this was not money in search of a problem. This was a problem that we were fortunate to get funded. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rod.
So there's, this, this resolution is only for support for one section of this project. The section that we're talking about is actually not in any of the plans that the gentleman's talking about, okay? So initially, when we came up with the concept and the design of this, of this whole system, it's, it's not done just by us here in Town Hall, okay? This is in conjunction with several professionals, okay? Looking at the entire area, identifying it as a major area of need. Green Meadows was essentially a, a bowl that's got no outlet, no positive connections anywhere. So while some homes on 164, especially on the north side, 163, in between 162 and 163, in the backyards of people's homes, water just has nowhere to go. And oftentimes, when we saw after an event, even if it wasn't, you know, the tropical storm at a 100-year, whatever event, water would stay there for, for multiple, multiple days. So this particular improvement is gonna connect a basin on the east side of 162, it's gonna go through the, basically 54th right-of-way, but there's no roads there. It's literally, it, it, it looks like it's adjacent to somebody's private property. So it's, it's not part of the, the map that the gentleman's referring to. The, the map that he's talking about talked about our comprehensive outlook with South Broward and teaming up with, with everybody, and what we could do to improve the whole drainage in that area. And now we're talking about, in the future, doing multiple connections, you know, to Southwest Meadow Sanctuary, east to Calusa, south and west to 166, and so on. That, we don't have funding for. When we came in, you know, when the, when the budget, the bids came in, the, the prices were significantly higher, and we were not able to do all that project. So this is nothing to do with that. This is nothing to do with that same document that we talked about, that we had, that presentation discussed it. This is merely a, an additional piece that will allow water to flow east to Dykes, west to 166, and it'll, it'll allow equalization for both areas. Now, again, to answer the gentleman's question, Dyke Road is not by any means solved. Now, we've done a bunch of improvements on Dyke Road to improve how, how flow is conveyed and the efficiency of the flow and whatnot, but it's not, it's not fixed. Even after that storm, we still had that issue, right? So we're just constantly striving to improve our drainage in that area because it's been identified as basically the worst one we have yet, or still in Southwest Ranches. And then when we implement the system, we think we're gonna, you know, make it more robust and fix it.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Is any other, any other council comment on this item? Seeing none, if we can call the roll on this item?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right. Item number 13.
Item 13 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with New Gen Strategies and Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $49,668 and zero cents for drafting of the solid waste request for proposal specifications including recycling, collection, processing, and disposal services, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Yeah, Russell?
I apologize, Mayor, but it looks like we may have a discrepancy in the written amount there and the numerical amount. I just want to make sure that what the exact amount is. It says in the written word, it's $49,668. The written number is $49,680, unless my eyes are failing me.
Right.
And I want to know what the exact amount is. Vanessa, do you have that amount? It is 49,680? Okay, so we have to make a Scrivener's Error Correction to this resolution, Mayor?
Yep.
If we can make a, a motion to approve with Scrivener's Error Correction to the language?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Very good. Is there any, so this is basically to prepare the RFP. This is all in preparation of the new waste contracts that are coming up. Our contracts expire at the end of our fiscal year, end of September. And so, this is getting assistance and putting together the RFP for this. Is there any further comments on this from the council?
I just have, and maybe this is just me thinking out loud, concerns, something you had wrote or written about the recycling, and whether it is actually put into recycling or whether it's commingled. Because I don't see a benefit to any of our residents that if it's just commingled, we're just paying for double services. And if that, if it in fact is being commingled and it's not being recycled, then I think that we should return the benefits to our residents.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's gonna be a very interesting process as we go through these vendors. I know Andy is already speaking with some of the vendors, trying to work out what it is that is mutually agreeable to, in a very informal way. One, what's mutually agreeable, what kind of what makes sense to them, and then we can look at that and see what makes sense to us so that with the assistance of this other organization, that we can put together an RFP that hopefully will give us a much better final product. Certainly, this has been, waste pickup has been one of the biggest issues that I hear resident feedback on that's not positive. And so, we're looking definitely to improve on that going forward, regardless of what vendor, what vendor we pick. So, is there any public comment on this item?
New Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. What I'd like to see in this contract is him basically giving us maybe a Chinese menu-type of situation where we can say the commingling, our separate recycle and garbage pickup, whether or not one or, what's the cost on one time per week versus two times per week? Because I know many municipalities have gone to one time per week. And whether or not we're going to have several people on a truck or one person on a truck and they use a grabber, what's the difference in the cost on those? And then, the council and the residents can figure out what they want. Where we get to saying, well, this is the one plan, and I believe this is the best and most, least expensive, is not something I want to see. I want to see the various different ways of doing something. And we also got Broward County throwing itself into the mix also. So, we've got to take a look at that. So, you know, what are we, you know, I want to get the money's worth. And I don't want them just to say, well, this is the way, this is my report, you know, here's my two pages, and this is what the, you know, you should do. I want to see, these are all the options that we have. Period. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's valid. It's a fine, it's a bit of a dance, let's put it that way. Because, you know, what's gonna happen is we'll do the RFP. Hopefully, we'll get a number of responses to that. And then, it's a matter of trying to figure out exactly what you're talking about. Will we have the exact numbers on all of them? Probably not, straight up. It's not really till you get to the contract time that all that really gets worked out to the final numbers. And you can't do multiple contracts for multiple vendors. So, but there, so I mean, it's a bit of a dance, but we're gonna, we'll try and do what we can do because it's a valid point. All right. Any further comment on this item? Seeing none, if we can call the roll?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman? Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, item 14.
Mayor, if I may, on item 14, one of the items I covered with all of you was that we had not received a signed contract or back, contract back from the proposed contractor on this. So, I actually have the question for staff, for legal, for finance, for Public Works. Did we at any point receive that signed agreement at the 11th hour today? We have not received that signed agreement.
Okay. So, for item number 14, do we want to table that for next meeting, or?
While I, I'm gonna let Marty speak. I'll just say while I'd like to approve it and move forward, my fear is if you approve it and they make changes, it's gotta come back before you anyway.
Right.
So, I want to hear what Marty, I do want to hear what Marty's thought is on it, but I do have some concerns.
Andy hit it right on the point. We need to move forward due to the fact that we have a deadline attached to this. And we'll work with the assistance of legal to work through the problems and determine if we have to come back if necessary. So, we'd appreciate that, maybe making it subject to a legal input or no changes. That's all I have. Andy hit it right to the spot.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Mayor, the council could express the approval for the contract as it is here and specify that there'd be no additional changes. I mean, this is what you'll agree to, which is what we were recommending.
That's inherent if we do it, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Anything else would have to come before you. We, if we're not able to meet our deadline because we wind up tabling this, we may have to go back to the state and ask for an extension. We don't know if we'll be able to get that. Obviously, we want to be able to move it forward. But I, as I've expressed to you all privately and here, I do have some concerns.
Okay. I think we should probably just proceed the way we are and basically tell them we need it the way we've approved it.
Yeah. Mayor, just so everyone, sure, we're on number 14, right?
Yeah.
This is the one that's been taken over, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, by the surety.
Right.
And so, we're required to pay our original price, but the surety has to pay the gap between our original price and the new vendor.
Right.
I don't want to give the surety any reason to say that we've breached, you know, the bond. And as such, I would approve this. There's a provision in the resolution, Section 3, that authorizes Andy, in conjunction with you, Mayor, and myself, to make any modifications necessary as long as it meets the intent of this resolution. And from that standpoint, since the gap difference, which is all we're talking about here is money for the installation of guardrails,
Right.
is paid by the surety, I don't have as much concerns as I would in a different type of contract because we have a bonding agency who's responsible. So, I recommend you approve it. We'll try to hold their feet to the fire to sign it. And if there's any minor modifications, we'll bring it back to the next council for discussion.
Perfect, perfect, makes sense.
Okay, so you need a motion to approve?
I think we do.
I just gave it.
Awesome. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Yes. Oh, man. Okay, go ahead, please.
Item 14 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving an agreement with Bacolaw Construction and Engineering Development LLC in the amount of $577,393.42 to complete the Hancock Road guardrail improvements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement approving a budget amendment into the fiscal year 2122, adopted budget, and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. Any council comment on this item?
I just had a question that the guardrails, are they going to have like openings for horses to go in and out periodically? I know we've done that in other places.
This is on Hancock Road.
Hancock, next to the canal.
It's next to the canal.
Yeah, it's right up against the canal.
Oh, it's right up against the canal. Okay, I understood it. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think we want the horse to go.
No, no, I understand that. I thought it was, I thought it was my misunderstanding.
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Any other comments? Any, let me open it one more time, public comments on this item? Seeing none. All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman? Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 15.
Item 15 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the First Amendment to Memorandum of Understanding with Broward County and other participating municipalities regarding collaborative study and subsequent development of an integrated solid waste and recycling system. Attached here too is Exhibit A. Am I reading 15?
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
And incorporated herein, and authorizing the proper town officials to execute, authorizing the expenditure of funds, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
New Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. What's the amount of funds we're talking about here? The expenditure of funds?
2,200?
What funds? How much?
2,200. It pays to be a small city.
All right, any further comment on this? Public comment is closed. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman? Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 16?
Item 16 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a change order to the amount with weekly asphalt paving incorporated in the amount of $72,954.00 to complete the Broward County Surtax-funded transportation, surface drainage, and ongoing rehabilitation of Southwest 128th Avenue, Southwest 130th Avenue, Melaleka Road, Southwest 133rd Avenue, Southwest 135th Avenue, Lupo Lane, and Southwest 136th Avenue, Hollity Trail, B.C., Southwest Ranches, fiscal year 2020-00003, authorizing the town administrator to amend the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any council comment on it? Andy, did you have something you wanted to?
I'll just say there were, when I did my briefings, there were a couple of different council members who had some questions about what exactly the scope is. And Rod's available to speak through the technical aspects of it.
Neither can I.
How's that, Councilmember Hartman? Okay, good. Yeah, when I did my individual briefings with you, multiple council members had some questions as far as what this actually entailed. And so, I did speak with Rod. I understand what it is, but he's gonna be able to give you that in 30 seconds, probably better than I can.
Perfect. Rod, if you could. You have to sit closer to the front, I think.
First and foremost, I just want to be clear, this is not gonna cost us any money, okay? So, it's a change order, but the original amount we had approved from Surtax, it's not exceeding that amount. Okay, so it's not gonna cost us any money. So, what happens is this is a little bit of a, of a, an issue from not doing as much design, okay? So, kind of like a drawback from that. Because when we did the surveying and the engineering, we had spot elevations everywhere. So, what we're trying to do right now is treat it more of a maintenance-type project. But as we do it now, and we drive all the streets and we go through, there's, what's happening, especially on this project, on this particular one, there's a lot of areas that have swales in them. So, our consultant went by, identified the swales, and what we're trying to do is minimize our work. So, we're proposing to just do that two-foot strip. But it's hard to see when you're driving through in a car. And now, as they're going through it and doing the construction, and I'm going through and doing my inspections, you could clearly see that the elevation of the grass has been, it's so much higher than it used to be that water can't run off and go into the soils that are there. So, this is basically a physical thing that we've identified that has to be corrected in the field, and this will take care of that issue.
Thank you. It is. All right. Any comment on this item, any public?
I do.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Just want to make a reminder what Noah was referring to about all the dirt. We brought that up. I think we need to designate a park where we're gonna deposit any excess fill. And I'd like to hear that, you know, before the project gets going, you know, sometime. You know, Rod's a different, whether it's Green Meadows Sanctuary or, you know, the Equestrian Park or...
Yeah, no, I think, frankly, the park that's closest to it is probably the one that should be at the top of the list.
Yeah, but that park's done. That park's done.
You know, I don't know. I mean, yeah, it's done, but there may still be spots that are low that have drainage issues. I'm not saying that that's a steadfast thing, but I think it's, it's, it takes the least amount of time, effort, cost to do it. And if you can keep the dirt, you know, make use of it locally, it's better that way. If there's no use for it there, then go elsewhere. But I would, that's just my, my thought, is keep it as close as you can.
No, that's fine. I'm just saying, let's have, let's have a park designated, or parks.
Yeah.
Gary, wouldn't that depend on the quality of the fill itself? You can't take some of that fill out to the ball field that's proposed in the Country States Park because of the rocks and everything in it. You'd never be able to have a ball field. But, you know, some of that wouldn't hurt to be put elsewhere. But I would think it'd be the quality of the fill decide where it would go, you know? I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point. I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that we as a council have the information we need to make these types of things.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't go somewhere else.
You know, in the field engineering, more discussion on where it should go.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it doesn't go somewhere out of town.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just, I just remembered that when we had the event and when, I guess, the Sunshine Ranches HOA had their meeting, or had their event over at the Equestrian Park, the parking lot was pretty muddy after that, and it might need a little.
Yeah, that's what I mean, there may be.
It might need a little extra in that parking lot.
Right, right. Yeah, Bob?
Yeah, I'm looking at the 72, and I heard Rod's reason for it. And it sounds like it's something that we discovered in the field. But, you know, just in terms of continuous improvement, how do we prevent against this in the future? What do we do differently, or what do we learn from this so that next time we go out there, there's no change order, we've covered this type of a scenario? That's really for Rod.
I'll save Rod the trip. The only way to do that is to do advanced surveying and engineering, which costs us much more upfront. So, there's savings in doing it this way, but that puts us in a position where sometimes we need to make these adjustments late.
Is that fair enough?
So, surveying, not a drive-through or something along those lines, this would be unavoidable without a survey?
Correct, correct. We'd have to do the survey and the engineering on it. And we did this, as Rod said before, more, it's a maintenance issue, so that we save those expenses and the time of doing those things upfront. But when you start to do the work in the field, then you, you start to see some modifications, some changes that need to be made. So, that's what this was. It's less expensive in the long run to do it this way anyway. But there's some things you just don't know till you start the project.
So, I'm hearing it's unavoidable without spending considerably more money?
Right.
Thank you.
Any further comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman? Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item number 17, review of the charter officers.
Sure, I just, sorry, Mayor. I was reading Andy's text that said, "Why don't we do this next month?" Now, I'm joking. You know, council, you know, annually pursuant to agreements, you have the opportunity to review your charter officers. And fortunately, in this town, which is different than other municipalities where I've worked in or sit in the audience, in Southwest Ranches, it has generally... it has generally been consistently for the last however long Andy and Marty have been here, generally.
Ten years.
Ten years at this point, a love fest, rather than what I'm accustomed to, which is, you know, harsh reviews and lots of infighting.
And what we had before Andy and Marty were here.
Correct. In fact, Andy and I were watching, I was present, he was watching on TV, a, a essential review of an assistant administrator that was worthy of television a few nights ago. But that, that being said, you know, annually, what generally happens is, I sit down with Andy after he's had the opportunity to meet with the other charter officers, which are Russell and Marty, and discuss with him not only performance, where the town sits, and what people are looking for in terms of either bonus or, or compensation amendment, and we really have a thorough vetting and discussion and look at other municipalities. This year, I was incredibly fortunate that our mayor agreed to sit in the meeting with me, so not only did Andy perform, prepare an incredibly lengthy list of accomplishments for calendar year 2021, which also, you know, included the, the budgetary numbers of, of where the town stood at the end of 2021, but realizing that all of that took place in the midst of a worldwide pandemic, where every municipality I ever worked in was completely shut down, but this town was still in complete operation and, and almost didn't skip a single beat and still provided service to the residents, made this a very good year for the town, and, and I can tell you, you probably have one of the best administrative teams in, in any municipality that I, that I've seen in Broward County at this point. You know, that being said, there are three charter officers that we look at, Andy, Russell, and Marty, we looked at Marty even though he left. You snooze, you lose. So, so I, I guess we, we can start with Andy and Russell. I had sent the council a complete email, and I'm looking at the email that I sent to everyone individually, where we looked at other salaries of other administrators in comparable municipalities. I hate doing that for the general public's knowledge, because the town's benefits are so woefully low when in comparison to every municipality, it's really impossible to do an apples-to-apples comparison if you're just looking at salary, because they make it up in so many other ways with FRS, cellular phone bonuses, carve bonuses, you know, gas cards, you know, all these other things, that it, it's really almost impossible. But, but that being said, as it related directly to Andy, what the mayor and I found is that, and, and I feel like I should just read it, because it makes it a little bit better.
That would be great, thank you.
Andy may, remains committed to the town and has reaffirmed his desire to stay until his eventual retirement, which is three years left on his contract unless we can all convince him otherwise. Andy is currently getting paid one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-four-hundred, which remains on the lower end of the administrator salaries, and I delineated the salaries, unfortunately for Andy, who wasn't here during the Chris Russo days. To help keep the base salary low, or lower, which may help the town, you know, essentially in the future, be competitive when Andy's either designated successor or future successor comes to the town, Andy has offered the town to consider a bonus in lieu of salary increase. To be quite frank, Andy every year is very magnanimous and, and humble, and basically says, you know, don't look at me, look at others, so it's not like he was even asking for anything, and it was only until the mayor and I said, no, this is not appropriate, you know, a bonus here is warranted. So in two thousand and, I'm going to mess this up, twenty, because I messed up the years here, the council gave Andy a nine-thousand-dollar bonus based on the then state of economy. After much discussion and the incredible year realized by the town, the mayor and I felt comfortable in recommending a one-time bonus in the amount of nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars for calendar year 2021, which would be paid immediately, which would yield a direct compensation for calendar year 2021 in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-nine-hundred, which still makes Andy one of the lowest-paid administrators in Broward County, but it makes it more competitive on, on the salary end. So as a result of his incredible performance, you know, the mayor and I felt very comfortable in recommending this, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, but feel, you know, we would appreciate your consideration of that amount.
Thank you, Keith. I want to just express my appreciation for Keith in, in helping us work through this. He's a good, kind of a mediator in the middle, and was really helpful in this whole process. Thank you, Keith. I do agree a hundred percent with what Keith just expressed. We are incredibly fortunate to have Hand, have Andy here, and as Keith expressed, Andy is incredible in a lot of ways, but one of the ways is the way that he takes care of his people and those that report to him. And he was literally saying, don't give me an increase, you know, I just want to keep my, my, my people happy. And, and that, that says a lot about Andy, but Andy, you've done an amazing job. We've got a document here that I welcome residents to look at. It is incredibly impressive what was done in this past year through a very difficult year, and, and so you, you've definitely earned this bonus from my perspective, and really appreciate all that you've done. I want to, one other slight comment, then I'll open up to the other council to speak. It, it's important that feedback, nobody is perfect, right? Nobody is perfect. And so Andy and I have conversations every year about, you know, things that I feel like areas, just ways really to, just to challenge him, so that he, you know, continues to grow, just as people do that to me at work where I work. And, and, and it's always a really positive conversation that Andy, I know is, he actually is looking for that type of feedback. I tried to do it once on the council, and I got, I got skewered for it, so I'm not going to do that anymore, but we have great conversations one-on-one, and he's always looking to do better, so thank you for all you do, Andy. Let me open it up to the rest of the council.
Yeah, you know, we can't say enough good things about Andy and his leadership, you know, whether it's a rainy day or a sunny day, it's, it's pretty fantastic. Let me ask you a question, are you, are we looking for a motion for this, a resolution?
Yes.
Or just a general agreement?
No, no, a motion.
Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Approve this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to personally say thank you, Andy. As a new elected official, I don't know what I'd have done without you. I do thank you so much. Thank you.
Andy, just say that you've helped me, taught me a lot, and don't hide the ball, and I appreciate the candid. Thank you.
Bob, any comments that you'd like to make?
Yeah, absolutely. So when I look through the achievements that Keith had sent out and, and we received a bit ago, I look at that as Andy's hand behind all of that. You know, Andy is the leader of the organization, and to some extent, he's our leader as well. You know, in theory, Andy works for us, but he keeps us going on the right track. He helps us all the time, focus on what's important. You know, I, I wish we had in the budget to go further, and I'm sure Andy would agree with me, but I'm, I'm very happy with his performance. Anytime I've got a question, he generally has the answer, or he brings it back to me within very reasonable amount of time, very quickly. So, you know, I, I give Andy tremendous credit for the success of the town and our collective success as well, so I completely support Keith's recommendation.
Excellent, thank you, Bob. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Andy, did you want to?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you right now. I do have some more comments I want to make, but I'll withhold them until we complete the other two reviews, if that's all right?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, seeing no other comments, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Yes, yes. Russell just wanted me to, well, it's a bonus, it's irrelevant anyway, for, for salary increases, it's effective back to January first. He just wanted me to make it clear. But that was a bonus, anyway. All right, the, the second individual that the, that the mayor and I discussed with Andy was Russell Munoz. My notes on this is that Russell has taken on far more responsibilities in, in 2021, and has firmly rooted himself as the true assistant town administrator, and I'll say it, Andy still views him as his heir apparent and a absolute critical member of the town staff. Last year, the council increased Russell's salary to one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-six-hundred. The council was unable to persuade Russell at that time to commit to a longer term, and as such, he currently serves without formal contract at the pleasure of the council. Based upon the expanded role within the town, the mayor and I had a conversation with Russell through Andy, or Conchoit, and, and Russell agreed that in the event that the town council increased his base salary to one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred, which is essentially a ten-thousand-dollar increase, he would formally agree to a three-year commitment to the town, and, and based on the same language that we put in there, that in the event he leaves early, them funds get remitted back to the town. Based on this offer, there was no doubt that myself and the mayor felt incredibly comfortable in recommending this salary increase and accepting Russell's agreement to stay at the town for a minimum of three years with the increased salary. As a result of his agreement to increase his salary, Russell has agreed to also forego a straight bonus for calendar year 2021, and instead accept the salary increase commencing in January one, 2022. So that was our review.
Excellent, thank you, Keith. Russell, I just want to confirm with you that you are, you're comfortable with that commitment?
I am, although Keith tried to get me to sign on for five years, but...
That's next year.
No, I appreciate the support. I just want to clarify something, just for the record, so there's no ambiguity, you said it was an increase of, of ten thousand, it's actually a twelve-thousand-dollar increase, so just a...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, I don't want any misunderstanding.
It does say that.
Yeah. Okay, not a problem, just want to make sure it's clear. And again, I appreciate the support from the council, town staff, obviously, we, I couldn't do any of this without Debbie and, and Dan in my office, and certainly the support of every one of the town staff. I mean, we just have a tremendous staff, and I've told Andy this many times in private, I'd like the opportunity to say this publicly, this was by far his best year. We were faced with tremendous adversity in this past year, and certainly, you know, he, he, he led us through it, and really proud of the, the effort that he led, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Well said, thank you. Yeah, and just, just to add my thoughts on to that, I think we are extremely fortunate as a town, certainly no disrespect to Andy in any way, but I feel like we've got two town administrators here, I really do. I think that we are blessed to have two individuals that are so qualified, have so much experience, and knowing that you're there, Russell, to, you know, assist, fill in the gaps, and take over leadership on so many things, is, is, very few organizations have that, whether it's a town or any other type of organization, very few have that, and we are extremely fortunate to have you and your services here, and I'm thrilled that you're making that three-year commitment, and, and I don't mind saying on the record that I personally do view you as the heir apparent to this. I think that with your experience, with your knowledge of our town, with having seen you operate in so many different situations and perform so well, that it's, it's, it's a very blessing to our town, and very fortunate our town to have you, so appreciate all that. Absolutely. With that, let me open it up to the other council and comments.
Go ahead.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, we will.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you, Russell, for somebody that has no real skills with the computers and stuff, I'm getting there, so thank you so much.
Um, Russell, um, thank you. Yeah, I've seen your, your, is Bob talking?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Russell, I've seen the different roles that you've moved into, and you just, it's like you're a master at what you're doing, and if, if, if there is a heir apparent, it's you, in my, in my mind. So I wish it was five years. All right, but, yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, Bob.
Russell, I've been completely impressed by your growth since you've joined the town. I remember when you first joined, and I, I saw an eager guy who really wanted to come in and try to make a difference, and I think that you, you've, I guess astonished is probably a strong word, but it, it's how I feel. You, you've done a phenomenal job. Every time there's something new that's upcoming, whether it was the, the, the run, or, you know, the, the Humane Society coming out, anything that the town's doing that's new, you've got your hands in it, and everything turns out very well. It's, it's, it's a credit to your leadership, to your enthusiasm, you've done a great job. I, I, I share the mayor's sentiments, and, you know, I'd really like to see you succeed, Andy, when, when it's time for Andy to retire, so if it were an assistant town administrator award, like you've got Clerk of the Year a few years ago, I think you deserve that as well. So, great job, keep up the good work, and thank you.
Mayor, if I could chime in?
Yeah.
You know, there's not enough good things to say, but one thing I can really, really, it's really impressive, is the teamwork between Andy and Russell, and the leadership is totally seamless, it's just, the continuity is unbelievable, and we're really, really lucky to have the, the team the way it works out. It, it, it really is impressive, and on that note, I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further comments on this item? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment closed. Call the item.
Councilmember Allbritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman? Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
That's passed.
Finally, the mayor and I got to speak with Andy about the town's financial administrator, Marty Sherwood. As you're all aware, Marty tendered his resignation, I wrote backslash, retirement, to the town at the end of the year. As a result of that, Andy recommended that we give him a ring, Russell said we should give him an orchid. Notwithstanding his retirement, the mayor and I believed, after reviewing the list and, and the numbers were just absolutely sensational, that a bonus was justified based upon Marty, Marty's job performance in calendar year 2021. As such, the mayor and I felt comfortable in recommending a one-time bonus in the amount of five thousand dollars. We believe, I believe Marty's current salary is one-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-eight-forty, in, in, I think it was 2020, he got a bonus of six thousand four hundred, so the proposed bonus is just less than four percent of his current salary, and we felt it was extremely well- And we felt it was extremely well justified based on an incredible year. And we all said that if Marty agreed to stay longer, that bonus would no doubt be double, if not triple. So just something for him to think about, but really just a phenomenal year and it was basically the town saying thank you with the understanding that he was seeking to retire.
Right. Thank you, Keith. Marty, you know, there's offer out there. No, listen, listen, we're running out of times that we can say thank you to you, so I want to make sure that we say it properly. I'm going to do a little recollection here of things of the way it was when you arrived and it wasn't good. And you found that completely unacceptable. You turned it around. You surrounded yourself with an incredible staff to assist you, of great professionals. And we, as in a council, we tried to support you as best we could, but you've done an amazing job and this past year was no different. You know, reserves are above where they need to be, budget surpluses every year, a budget process that is scheduled out and is on time and meets all the deadlines, a budget process that we can actually understand the numbers and that make a lot of sense. You've done an incredible job and I will continue to twist your arm to keep you around for as long as we possibly can. Thank you for all you do. Any other council comments?
Marty, real quick, I want to say thank you for helping me understand financing. And I have something very special that I think other people may not think so, but I actually have a signed copy of the last official town budget from Southwest Ranches with your signature on it. Best wishes, Jim, and I will keep that. Thank you so much.
Marty, I'm just trying to find that budget book that was out on Halloween when the Bale of Hay thing was out there. Remember seeing the budget book out there? Trying to locate that one. Anyway, thank you for your work. Very, very respectful. So, and you do a good job. And, you know, it's going to be really, really, really hard to find somebody that would match your quality. Thank you.
Bob?
Yes. Marty, I could go on for a half hour here, but we only have five minutes left. I agree completely with Steve on his comments about what you inherited. And what impresses me the most is your leadership. When somebody joins an organization and turns around the group and builds a team of professionals that will be able to fill the gaps when that leader moves on, to me, that's the highest praise. And you've done a tremendous job. I mean, we've been, I think Steve said it as well, we've been under budget, we've, our reserves are in some cases, you know, significantly higher than they need to, I shouldn't say need to be, but they're higher than they could be. And the fact that we have surplus on an annual basis that turns us around and allows us to do some big things in the next fiscal year is all a credit to your skills as a leader and as a finance person. So I know I'll miss you. A character is leaving the building. You've been one of the town's characters and I've enjoyed every minute of working with you. Thank you. And you deserve the bonus. I wish we could do more.
My turn?
Yeah.
Outstanding. Marty, you make us look good. You make us look great. We are really, really lucky. Ten straight years of surplus bonus. I mean, well managed. It's unbelievable. And on that note, I make a motion to approve.
Awesome.
Excuse me, can I, I wanted to thank you before the motion comes on the table. And I loved working here. It's been a great family. A big reason for here is, of course, the continuity, not only of Andy, but of council. We've had very few turnover. With council, of course, is a priority who I report to. I do want to indicate that in the past, you know, Keith has reached out to me for renewal as well, and I appreciated that. So I think it was a hint in prior years that I didn't want to be locked into a long-term contract. But I have agreed to and promised you continuity and a successful transition. What presently, that, what Keith has offered, I think is a little low considering what's being offered to town administrator and the assistant town administrator. So due to factors, the final saga, the final end, right now, I would appreciate a little bit more compensation as a one-time bonus, with the understanding that I will continue to transition, work with staff and Andy, Russell, whatever needed, to keep the progress in force. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you being upfront about that. I don't necessarily, I don't have a problem with that. I want it, I think it's important, I think it's important that certainly Marty has done an amazing job and I think it's important that we have a good team effort here. So I would be, I would be comfortable, say 7,500 maybe. Just throwing out a number, just making it up. I don't know what you all think.
Well, first I will draw my motion on the earlier one.
Yeah.
I don't know if I got a second or not.
I think you did. We withdraw the second. There was no second? Okay.
Yeah.
There was. I thought I heard one.
You withdrew it.
Thank you.
Okay. No, let's, can we withdraw that motion?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we're clean slate now.
Clean slate. What are the thoughts? Tell me the thoughts of the council.
I think Marty's earned it. I think he has, and it would be something I would support.
I don't have a problem with it.
Bob, any concerns?
Glad we can do it.
Jim?
No concerns.
Marty, is that in line?
I was just thinking more like a 10%, but $10,000 would be more acceptable from what I feel I deserve.
Well, I guess, I guess what I would say is you've done, obviously, an exceptional job. It's very difficult to put that into a number, per se. And I want to not only be fair to you, but I want to keep it in line with what we've given to others. So it's not, I'm not comfortable going above that number, not because you don't deserve it. That's not the way I'm putting it, but it would, to me, it generates a much bigger conversation about the whole process. So, yeah, I'm still hoping out of their ideas, but that's kind of my...
No, no, but let me interrupt. I make a motion and we continue the meeting until...
Second.
You were allowed to finish this item, so...
Okay. Just want to make sure I watch.
Wait, Bob, the vice mayor was saying that we needed a motion to continue the meeting, but this is our last item and we are allowed to finish the item we're on, so I think we're good.
Yep.
Okay. Yep. I don't know, what do we think?
I feel in a very funny spot right now.
Yeah.
I feel very, I feel uncomfortable up here right now.
Yeah, I know. I know.
Mr. Mayor, would you feel comfortable, if he's asking 10 and you want 7,5, would you feel comfortable at 87,50 split the difference? Would that be something that would be, I mean, that...
That's not, that's not a big enough difference that I would, I would be concerned about it. I don't know if that is, does anything for Marty or not.
I would accept the compromise. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I will.
Then I'm fine with that.
Yep.
And you? Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Bob, are you all right with that? Did you hear? 87,50?
No, I didn't. 87,50?
Yeah, 8,750 bonus.
I said I can live with that.
Okay, great. I think we're good.
All right. Then I move that the bonus be 87,50.
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none. Any public? We're out of public. They're gone.
Public's gone home.
Public's gone home. It's late. All right. Debbie, call the motion.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, before you adjourn.
Yeah, no, no, I know.
I just had a couple of comments I wanted to make.
Yes.
First of all, on behalf of all of us, I want to thank all of you. I can tell you that working with a council like this, that's cohesive, that's organized, that's respectful, makes our job a whole lot easier. And so I thank you for your cooperation and the ability for all of us to be able to work with all of you, first of all. Second of all, I thank Keith for his role, not only tonight, but for the partner that he is in keeping the town on track. He and I have developed a great working relationship, which I am appreciative of, and I thank him for that. I do want to thank the staff because any success I have is certainly on their shoulders. I'll say this, I am lucky enough to be the captain of an all-star team. That's really the way I see it. They're all-stars and I'm just trying to stay out of their way sometimes. So they do a great job. I do want to thank Marty. I've worked with Marty for, yeah, now almost 10 years. By the way, there's only three town administrators or city managers that have more longevity than I do in the county at this point. So I can outlast all of them at this point. And I know Charlie would probably be there forever, but I may catch up to the other two. Marty is simply the best finance director that I've ever worked with and I've worked with a few and I've known a lot more. His depth of knowledge, his caring about this town and making sure that we do everything right is absolutely unmatched. We wouldn't be sitting here having the conversation that we're having about last year without his input and the guidance and support that he's provided. I know on more than one occasion, he's kept me out of trouble. And while I don't always agree, I greatly, greatly respect his input and that's something that certainly could be missed. And Russell is, you know, you've, you know, all spoken very favorably about Russell. He's an insurance policy for this town. He's a security blanket for me. I know that if anything happens to me, this town doesn't, you know, doesn't miss a beat. That gives me great peace of mind and so I'm appreciative of that and the working relationship that we have. You know, he came into this town very knowledgeable, very experienced. We've thrown things at him that, you know, kind of can't be done, but he didn't know it couldn't be done, so he went and did them. He kind of gets done everything we throw at him and I'm appreciative of that. It's just, you know, it's just been a great experience here, working with everybody that's here, and I thank you all again for your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Can we adjourn now?
We're waiting on you.
You're waiting on me?
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.